Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone out there.
Good evening.
That's a little bit better. Merry Christmas, everybody out there. There we go. Now, we're all warmed up, except for the hot chocolate. We'll call the meeting to order. Apologize for just a couple of minutes late due to our closed session meeting. And we will open with the...
Close session report.
Yeah. Yes, thank you. Close session report. We're going to start with that.
All right, Mayor and members...
I'm the city attorney.
Mayor, members of the City Council, I have nothing to report out of closed session for this evening.
That was pretty important, Mr. City Manager. Glad you brought that up. Okay. Would you lead us in the pledge?
I will, absolutely.
Thank you.
Is it over your heart? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Litzter?
Here.
Councilmember Lovinos?
Here.
Councilmember Judge?
Here.
Mayor Protem Kavanaugh?
Here.
Mayor Mashburn?
Here.
I have a little request to make before we go to the first agenda item. And I don't know if all of you have noticed, but over the past many, many months, our meetings seem to drag on to a very late hour. And I would like to make an attempt to go strictly to the business of the city and get through these meetings in a timely fashion. By that, I don't mean cutting anybody short. However, I would like to suggest to the council, looking for their approval, to go ahead and time our comments. And just like we do at the public statements, we start a clock, give three minutes for our comments, and then, of course, if there's any additional comments made, we'll go back to that and have a second attempt. So I'm asking the council if that's something they could deal with.
And if I understand, we would just rotate back, everyone. We could ask questions as long as we need, but everyone has an opportunity to speak first after three minutes. Is that what you're intimating?
Yes. That's three minutes, then go to other council members. And if you have additional comments, then yes, we'll go ahead and do another three minutes for each council member. We'd have to take a look at a third round based on, is this just repeat, or is this something new that came out of one of the other council members? So guaranteed six minutes of talking. That's a lot of talking.
No, it sounds good. Does this require some kind of a motion, or is this just something we're trying tonight? I'm trying to understand the context legally.
The mayor, as a chair, can set the procedures, the protocols, and I would recommend a vote to determine exactly what it is you're asking to do.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we limit our comments to three minutes per, and then two times we could do the comments, so a total of six minutes. And additional time will be at the discretion of the mayor or the chair, and especially looking at if there's new items that came up during the discussion.
Second.
Mayor, may we have discussion?
I'm sorry?
Can we have discussion on this motion?
Do I have it for second?
Can we have discussion on this motion?
Yes, we've always done discussions.
Well, not always, but I would like to know what the rationale is for limiting discussion. I'm concerned about freedom of speech issues, but I would say I would counter with a five-minute limit. Sometimes it's hard to get three minutes in, so are you saying three minutes of discussion? And if we're asking the staff a question, it takes more than three minutes, then that's the end of your question? I'm very confused. And I also would like to know the rationale behind this.
The rationale is the amount of time that we're spending going through our agenda. In my opinion, it's far too long. And in my opinion, each of us can get out our thoughts, if we're prepared, easily within a three-minute period. And then there's a second three-minute period, if so desired, if you have something additional you want to make.
Would that include you, Mayor, as well?
Does it include what? I have a difficult time hearing because of the...
Would it include you as well?
Myself? Yes, absolutely.
So you would also be limited to three minutes?
Yeah.
I would just ask for five minutes. I think it's a little more reasonable.
Okay, well, I'm going to keep my motion at three minutes because that's what we limit our public to. So we have a motion and a second, and I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Litzter? Thank you. The motion passes with Councilmember Lovinos voting no.
And that's because I would like five minutes as opposed to three.
Before we leave Agenda Review, I do want to note that there's a supplemental for Agenda Item 4C. It's a memorandum that summarizes some of the Planning Commission comments regarding that agenda item. Planning Commission met last week to discuss it as well. So it is undiased before you tonight.
Okay, so that's... Any others as far as Agenda Review?
That's all from me.
I move that all resolutions, norances presented tonight be read in title only, and all further reading be waived.
Second.
Motion and second. Call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, this time, we'll discuss the declaration of conflict. If any member of the City Council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should so declare it this time. Anybody wish to?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the first item on the agenda is Item 1D1: Presentation of Certificates for Appreciation to Outgoing Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee Members. And Julio Ramirez is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. This evening, we are recognizing Mr. Andy Hanna, Ms. Janet Plant, and Planning Commissioner Tim Hodge as outgoing members of the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee. Committee members are committed to the city's continued efforts to provide services and community improvements to low- and moderate-income residents. During their tenure, these three individuals diligently reviewed, evaluated, and recommended funding allocations that benefited Simi Valley citizens. Please join me in congratulating these three committee members on a job very well done. I don't know if they're in the evening, in chamber with us this evening. I don't see them, or maybe they're joining us through Zoom. We will mail them their certificates. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is Item 1D2: Presentation of a Certificate of Commendation to Citizen Michelle Hilkema for her efforts to help the Simi Valley Police Department restrain a violent suspect. And Chief Livingstone is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, and members of the council. Tonight, we are recognizing Michelle Hilkema for her efforts to help the Simi Valley Police Department restrain a violent suspect. Ms. Hilkema, can you please join us up here at the front of council chambers? On Wednesday... First off, I'd like to say that it's usually police officers that run into trouble. And when you hear what happened here, you're going to see that when a citizen comes to the assistance of an officer running towards the trouble, this is an incredible story. And we wanted to recognize her for her efforts. On Wednesday, July 21, 2021, at approximately 6:00 p.m., a dog training class was in session near the Simi Valley Senior Center. The participants observed a man yelling and chasing people in the area. The man became more violent and began screaming at a class of 10 people there. One of the classmates called 911 to report the man, and the officers responded. The officers recognized the suspect from prior contacts and knew he had a felony warrant for his arrest. They spoke with the suspect for several minutes to build rapport and to try to de-escalate the situation. He only became more paranoid and unpredictable, and when they asked him to sit down, he ran away. The officers were able to catch up to him and take him to the ground where a violent struggle began. Witnesses reported that the suspect was grabbing for an officer's gun, and at one point, the suspect bit the forearm of an officer, resulting in a deep, open wound. And I kid you not, and I don't mean to cause any disturbances here, but a chunk of flesh was removed in the bite. Officer had to be hospitalized and off work for two weeks from the bite. Ms. Hilkema saw the fight, and again, she ran towards the officers to offer her assistance. Not only did she offer her assistance, she helped the officers hold the violent suspect down so they could place him in handcuffs. At that point, additional officers arrived, and they assisted in controlling the suspect. Ms. Hilkema is to be commended for her bravery and willingness to assist officers in need. And because of her actions, the officers were able to successfully apprehend the violent suspect without injury to the suspect. And again, like I said, the officer was off duty for several weeks and hospitalized with a severe wound. So I want to commend her and thank her for her willingness to run into danger to help officers in a time of greatest need.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council?
Wait, wait. We probably have some comments there. And I would just like to say thank you so much. Obviously, being a police officer is tough. I can only imagine how tough it is for being a civilian and then going in and going into battle like they have to do on a regular basis. So it's incredible what you did, and very much appreciated by the city and all the residents in the city. So thank you so much. And of course, I'm sure the officer is quite thankful also. And I would imagine that others have something to say.
I will. Coming from a law enforcement family, it really warms my heart that a citizen is willing to help an officer in need. So I just want to thank you for that. You're putting your own life at risk. You had no idea what you were getting into, so you're putting yourself above others, and that's commendable. So thank you so much.
I'll just say thank you also. This was a very, very brave thing you did, and you made the city a better place because of it. Thank you very much.
I'd say did it all of that, and we're proud that you're here, and thank you. I just want to thank you for being an example of what people do in the city, which is to help each other, to help each other during a time of need. And that is what the city is all about, is helping each other. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 1D3: Presentation of an Honorary Resolution Commending Officer Gene Colado as Officer of the Year. And Chief Livingstone will present this item as well.
Mayor Mashburn and members of the council, it is my pleasure to introduce the Simi Valley Police Department's Officer of the Year for 2021, Officer Gene Colado. Gene, will you please come forward to the front of the council chamber? Gene was chosen as the 2021 Officer of the Year by his police department peers for his dedication to his job and work ethic. So I'm going to read a resolution here that has a lot of wherethes in it, but one thing I'd like to say before I begin is really, Gene is one of those officers that, you know, he has built such a great rapport with the community. He's one of our school resource officers. And I can tell you, just in watching him work, he has, you know, he epitomizes what a school resource officer is. He empathizes with the kids. He builds that rapport with them. In one of the more notable incidents, we had a teenager that was going to jump off a freeway bridge, commit suicide. And Gene knew him from school, was able to get there, talk to him, and get him into help. And, you know, again, time and time again, I'm barely scratching the surface. He's got a heart of gold. He's got a great personality and sense of humor that endears himself to the kids and also to the staff at the school. And I can't say enough of how lucky we are to have this man out there working in our school. So it's a great honor for me to present him tonight, but I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution now. But again, we're really blessed to have him here working for us. Whereas the Simi Valley Police Department annually selects a member of the force to receive the Officer of the Year award, and no higher honor can be received than the recognition of one's peers within the police profession for distinguished service. And again, I can't say enough about that. He's chosen by his peers, not by the administration. And whereas the Simi Valley Police Officer of the Year award for 2021 has been bestowed upon Officer Gene Colado as the officer most distinguished within the Simi Valley Police Department due to his outstanding service to the community and dedication to his profession. And whereas Officer Colado began his law enforcement career in 2010 with the Santa Barbara Police Department, was sworn in as a Simi Valley Police Officer in 2011, assigned to the patrol unit, served two years as a field training officer, and was selected as a school resource officer in 2018. And whereas Officer Colado is an explorer advisor, a defensive tactics instructor, a first aid CPR instructor, and a mobile field force instructor, and juvenile law academy instructor, as well as a member of the crisis negotiation team, mobile field force team, and public relations team. And whereas Officer Colado has led the Simi Valley Police Department's COVID-19 protocols and helped to develop contact tracing procedures, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Simi Valley that it hereby extends Officer Colado with highest commendation for the excellent quality of work he performs and his commitment to his profession. I'd also like to say that Officer Colado was awarded this year the Officer Michael F. Clark Award, also for his dedication. He has single-handedly taken on all the duties that have gone with COVID in terms of bringing us in line with county public health and working with the individual officers. And so, again, we're really blessed to have him presented this 20th day of December 2021.
Would you remain up here? Thank you. I know Gene that much, and what a leader. And what's really amazing, I'll go to these football games at Simi and Royal High School, and wherever you see a beehive of activity, a beehive of students following some ball-headed guy, you'll find Gene there. And he has this special way of relating and communicating.
And he has this special way of relating and communicating with, I think, virtually all students. Yeah, across the board, just everybody, and they all have a huge amount of respect for him. It's a great thing to see him on the campus and seeing him be so accepted and open and down-to-earth. It's just, he's got a unique ability to communicate with the students. And then if he communicates with an adult, then he starts bantering. But that's also fun, too. But you're a super guy and a very important part of our community, and thank you very much.
I also just wanted to say something. My daughter works at one of the middle schools as a counselor, and she called me saying, "You have to call and nominate Gene. You have to nominate Gene." I don't know how many letters they got from the school district honoring you and saying what a great job you do. I know we have trustee Don Small in the back here to recognize your award tonight, too. So I just want to say you've done a great job with the kids. I've seen you in action, and it really makes a big difference to our schools. So thank you, Gene.
Do you want to say, officers, we love and appreciate all that you do. And we recognize, really, in that as our chief is going through the list of some of the things you do, from First Aid CPR training to Young Explorers, you go through the list. It's endless. And so grateful that you're willing to take on all those responsibilities. And ultimately, it is our youth that is our future, and that rapport, that respect for the law and for doing what's right, will you, that ripple effect will be felt through our community for years and years. So deserved, and thank you. We so appreciate Officer Colado. Amazing. Thank you.
I just wanted to say congratulations on your award and thank you for setting an example in our community.
Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next item on the agenda is item 2, Public Statements on Appointments, Special Presentations, and Informational Reports. All comments submitted by email have been provided to the City Council. However, they will not be read by the City Clerk this evening. Speakers will be called on in the order in which their card was submitted, followed by speakers who are assigned onto Zoom to speak for this public statement, item 2, for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. We do have some speakers' cards. Mr. John Lapper?
I got to ask a question of the congressman. When hecklers started booing my question, Mike Garcia asked the audience to be respectful as John Lapper has always been civil and respectful in his dealings with myself and our offices. When I attended this Assemblywoman Suzette Valideras, Chamber of Commerce, City Hall, Simi Valley Town Hall, I asked questions. I'm sure chamber members and Suzette Valideras would agree I was very civil and asked valid questions. When I addressed this council about concerns over fireworks and motorcycle traffic enforcement in town, only Mayor Mashburn responded by telling me to call his office and set up a meeting. I did, and we met. I am positive Mayor Mashburn would agree the meeting was civil, informative, and I presented my accurate information. I've spoken to Police Chief Livingstone on a few occasions. I am sure he would describe those meetings as civil and informative. So the question in my mind remains, why are four City Council members participating and allowing the defamation of my character at these City Council meetings? Why are you not seeking out the truth? City Council members DeeDee Kavanaugh, Elaine Littler, Mike Judge, and Mayor Mashburn have refused to respond to my public statements and official emails asking for explanations for their actions regarding their failure to appoint, nominate, and vote me onto the Neighborhood Council District Number Four. Why did our city attorney deny me answers to questions about the Brown Act, which clearly governs the City Council as well as Neighborhood Council Districts? Did Mayor Mashburn violate the Brown Act at November 8th council meeting when he nominated 16 candidates for Neighborhood Council, but then neglected to nominate John Lapper after he declared he would do so for all candidates? Why did this council, by their words and actions, support libelous and slanderous comments about my reputation in Simi Valley that are part of the Simi Valley City Council public statements? Libelous, slanderous comments, and lies like I deleted my Facebook account, deleted Facebook pages, incites rioting, lies about a Royal High School school photo, doxxed minors, and other citizens on Facebook revealing where they live and who they are, slandered City Council members as racist, putting minors at risk, serial harasser, doxing minors, supports putting people in camps, refused to remove a student photo, negative and destructive behaviors on social media with newspapers and public arguing, shown disrespect for our police department, and advocates defending the police, all false. Why did you ignore positive comments? It would appear that this is purely political and organized by Simi Republicans and private next-door group, of which Council Mike Judge participated. Yes, Simi Valley Republican Op Ed and Commentary Response Team members are all over these slanderous and libelous comments. Again, I ask this council for an apology in response to my inquiries as I am a resident of Simi Valley entitled to answer from those who serve the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gina Adams?
Hello, my name is Gina Adams, and I'm a proud Simi Valley resident of over 20 years. And I'm here today to speak in support of Councilwoman Luvenos from Mayor Pro Tem. I first met the Councilwoman during the 2018 election cycle and was impressed by her resume as an educator, who also holds a law degree and is active in so many community organizations. She is warm, approachable, articulate, intelligent, and a great listener. She is passionate about serving Simi Valley and its citizens and bringing important issues impacting them to the attention of the City Council. Now she is entering her fourth year on the council, and it's time to put aside partisanship and install her as Mayor Pro Tem, not only in consideration of her, but for the integrity of the council itself. Just as we don't want to be associated, we don't want our cities to be associated with racism. We don't want our city to be associated with cronyism either. I urge you not to pass over her again and do the right thing and install her as Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thomas Adams?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Thomas Adams, and I live in Simi Valley. The blatant partisanship displayed by council members on their duties to appoint volunteers and appointed offices such as Mayor Pro Tem have to come to an end. We are Simi Valley, and we can be better than that. John Lapper was passed over for Neighborhood Council because of partisanship. Ruth Luvenos has been passed over as Mayor Pro Tem in the past because of partisanship. Leanna Brand was passed over for the Arts Council because of partisanship. Our city, like our world, is filled with many people who have many ideas. It is time to trust the people, even if people are likely to disagree with you. It is time to trust the political process and cease being fearful and/or dismissive of citizens who wish to serve our city, even when, and I would even say especially when, their opinions are likely to differ from your own. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have no more speaker cards, but we'll check with Zoom.
Currently, we do have 13 attendees on Zoom. Please raise your hand at this time if you'd like to make a public statement on appointments, special presentations, and informational reports. Currently, I have four hands raised. You can either use your Zoom controls or star nine if you're on the phone. Okay, so Jody Cooper, I'm going to be putting you up. And then when you come on, please unmute yourself to speak.
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay, thank you so much, Mayor Mashburn, City Council members. I am here because I feel that a disservice is being done through the City Council. I think that City Council member Luvenos should be appointed as Mayor Pro Tem for her last opportunity to do so. She has been passed over multiple times, whereas in the past, it is passed from person to person throughout the council. She is rightfully qualified for this position. There's been so many times that I have been at community events. I am a resident of Simi Valley. And Ruth has always been there. She is representative of the community in a very positive light, and I feel that she should be appointed as Mayor Pro Tem for many, many reasons. But I'm going to leave it at that. Just please do the right thing. This is not acceptable for how things have happened in the past, and we need to right them right now. Thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you, and thank you for letting us know where you reside.
Sorry. Now I'm promoting Rocky Rhodes to panelist. Please unmute yourself after the delay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Rocky Rhodes. I'm a citizen of Simi Valley in District Four. I apologize I can't be there tonight in person. I'm excited that meetings are back, but I am out of town. I wanted to comment on a couple of the presentations tonight. Citizen Michelle and Officer Colado, thank you so much for everything that you do. You make our community safer by our excellent policing and our citizens helping the police officers do their job to keep citizens safe, unlike some who would want to serve in a city volunteer position that actually defies the safety of Simi Valley by allowing others to know where DUI checkpoints are going to come up. But my real reason for calling in tonight is I'm speaking on the appointment of Mayor Pro Tem. We're talking about the appointment, but that neglects the fact that we need to thank councilperson Kavanaugh for a great year of service, and thank you so much for that. I am anticipating tonight that City Council is going to follow precedent of not appointing a Mayor Pro Tem to someone that is up for election, of which both councilperson Luvenos and Judge would be up for election. So I'm anticipating tonight to congratulate councilperson Lister on the appointment, and I think you'll do an outstanding job. So thanks for letting me participate via Zoom. One of the benefits of COVID is that I can be out of town and still participate. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kelly McManaman, I am going to be promoting you to panelist. Please unmute yourself after the delay.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kelly McManaman, and I'm a resident of Simi Valley, California. Tonight, I want to urge members of the City Council to vote and appoint councilmember Ruth Luvenos to Mayor Pro Tem. For the past two years, councilmember Luvenos has been wrongfully deprived of the position based off of initial claims that she lacked experiences and other personal grievances. This year is the last term that Councilwoman Luvenos can become Mayor Pro Tem. While you sit there on that dais with the power to make this decision, I ask that you set aside personal differences tonight and vote not for retribution, but for justice. As a person who was born and raised in Simi Valley and have been involved with civic engagement, I look to Ruth Luvenos, also as a Latina, as a low-income, and first-generation student. I see myself a lot in Ruth Luvenos, and a vote to not make Ruth as Mayor Pro Tem is not just a diss or a slap on the wrist to Ruth that you think it is, but it's a slap on the wrist, and it's a disgrace to constituents like myself, to voters like myself, who have contributed my entire life, community service, to make this city a better place. But furthermore, it's a slap in the face to the people who have fairly voted in Ruth Luvenos. She deserves an opportunity to be Mayor Pro Tem, just as every person on this dais does. So tonight, I ask of you, what type of leaders do you want to be? And I really hope that tonight you vote with the integrity that I know you all have to make the morally right decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Cassandra Douglas will be promoting you to panelist. Please unmute yourself after the delay.
Can you hear me? Okay, hello, my name is Cassandra Douglas. I'm a lifelong resident of Simi Valley. I am calling in, or zooming in rather, in support of Councilwoman Luvenos being promoted to or nominated to the Mayor Pro Tem position. Along with what others have said, it is the necessary time for this to happen to mention some major accomplishments that Councilwoman Luvenos has brought to the city. She was vital in passing body cam requirements for the police department, which we know was something that was so vital just a couple months ago when there was a police officer shooting here in Simi Valley, and that helped clarify things. So thankfully, we had those body cam, the body cam footage. So thank you, Councilwoman Luvenos, for that. Also, the development housing complex on Tapo and Elmo, which is in the process of being built. She was vital in getting that passed. One thing that's personal to my heart is the LGBTQIA proclamation. If you are familiar, Simi Valley this year had our first Pride Parade, which I myself was able to organize along with RISE Simi Valley. And having Councilwoman Luvenos stand up and speak up for us was extremely vital in providing an environment for us to have a successful Pride event in Simi Valley. I am a Chikana as well. I'm born and raised in Simi Valley. I look on the dais, and I see myself up there. I see other girls like me or other women like me who have the opportunity to lead. It is the time for Councilwoman Luvenos to be Mayor Pro Tem. She deserves it. The city of Simi Valley deserves it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ginger Zagnoli, you're being promoted to panelist. And Ginger, please unmute yourself.
Hi. Thank you, everybody, for all that you've done. I enjoyed the presentations of Officer Livingston. I just wanted to quickly say that the appointment for Mayor Pro Tem tonight, I would like to go to Elaine Littler. In the few times that I have met with her and the City Council members, I have appreciated how well she listens, offers feedback, and direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rebecca, I'm going to be promoting you to panelist at this time. Please unmute yourself after the delay.
Hi, good evening, councilmembers. My name is Rebecca, and I am calling in support of having Councilmember Luvenos, Ruth Luvenos, appointed as the Mayor Pro Tem. I think that every time when her name has come up, which is, you know, there really is like a rotation that occurs with Mayor Pro Tem. There's always council members that find reasons why, you know, she shouldn't be Mayor Pro Tem, but they're really, you know, they never come up with these excuses for other council members. So I think that, you know, it's important for her to have her turn equally, just like everyone else on the dais has had and will have. It's Luvenos' turn to be Mayor Pro Tem. As a constituent, someone, you know, she has been someone that I have been able to reach out to, that I've been able to, that is accessible to me. When she has said, you know, "I'm open to listening to what you have to say," she has indeed opened her calendar to doing so. I have reached out to other council members who have told me, you know, "I'm too busy, try me next year," and things like that, you know, not even offering their office hours. So I really, you know, as someone who engages consistently, I do feel that Ruth Luvenos being named as Mayor Pro Tem is something positive and good for the city. It's her turn. Consistently, she has been passed over by, you know, for various reasons that, you know, y'all all come up with. But there really is never any resolution or any way for her to move forward. It just keeps happening. So my call today is really to express my support for Councilmember Luvenos to be named Mayor Pro Tem of Simi Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. And would you mind giving your residence location? Not location of your address, but what city you live in?
No, I decline.
Okay, thank you.
We have one more with their hand up. So Adam B., I'm going to be promoting you to panelist, and please unmute yourself once you have the little delay getting onto the Zoom.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Adam Blazy, born and raised in Simi Valley, and I'm calling to express the wish that Mayor, that Councilwoman Ruth Luvenos be appointed as Mayor Pro Tem. I think, as everyone can agree, trust and faith in our democratic institutions is probably at an out-time low. And I think municipal government is one way to strengthen people's trust again in the government, which I think is important. And I think just following basic procedures like this and following who ought to be appointed as Mayor Pro Tem is one way to shore up that trust. So again, I express the wish to have appointed to Mayor Pro Tem, Councilwoman Luvenos. Thank you.
Thank you.
And currently, that is all we have for Zoom doing public statements.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, we've concluded item number two on public statements. However, we have reached past 7:15, which is the time certain for our first public hearing on the redistricting. So at this time, we'll have to move to that item on the agenda and then come back to item number 3A appointments. So with that, I'll ask the clerk to start off 4A.
With all due respect, Mayor, I just want to make sure everyone who was waiting for public comments was able to give public comments.
We're having to jump because of time specific, and we're already behind just a little bit. So after we cover that, we'll go back to where we left off.
Respectfully, Mayor, can you just clarify that whoever is waiting and hasn't been able to give public comments will be able to do so later?
We have concluded public statements, item number two.
There's no one else waiting? That's what I want to make sure.
We did have someone's hand go up after.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Say that again. We did have someone?
We had someone's hand go up after.
After we changed. Okay, then they can wait, and we'll go back to them, just as I said previously. But we're going to go ahead and move with this time-specific public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is public hearing. This is a time for public testimony on hearings on the consideration of matters presented on this agenda. But the records show that due notice was given as required by law, and an affidavit to this effect is on file in the office of the City Clerk. All comments submitted by email have already been provided to the City Council and will be made part of the record. However, they will not be read by the City Clerk this evening. Speakers will be called on in the order in which their card was submitted, followed by speakers who are signed onto Zoom to speak for this public testimony, item four, for a period of no more than five minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. We are, comments shall be submitted, should be limited to matters relevant to the item on the agenda and may be ruled out of order if comments are unrelated to the item. The reports of the city staff relating to these matters shall be made part of the record of this meeting. If you challenge in court any of the City Council decisions made here tonight, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing. The time within which judicial review must be sought is governed by California Code of Civil Procedure Section 109, 4.6. We are going to proceed to Agenda Item 4A only at this time, correct?
Mayor, point order. Are you sure we don't? I just want to check with the city attorney that we don't need a motion to skip to a different part of the agenda? VCOG and other boards I'm on.
It's actually on the agenda as far as the time specific. So I'm just confirming that the time is appropriate, and I believe it is.
Okay, thank you.
Agenda item 4A, second public hearing before the City Council on the redistricting process to review submitted map and receive input from the public for the redrawing of election district boundaries and the selection of a final map. And the city's consultant, Kristen Parks, from National Demographics Corporation, will be presenting this item.
Welcome.
Good evening, Merry Christmas. I will do my best to get through this quickly. This is a legally mandated public hearing for redistricting, and this is the second public hearing before this council on redistricting. However, for the purposes of the Fair Maps Act that governs the redistricting process, this does count as your third public hearing out of four that are legally required. So just to clarify that for you. And the next slide. Beautiful. So this current map was adopted in 2018 of the four districts for the city of Simi Valley. And as I will report again in this presentation, these four districts remain population-balanced after the 2020 census, which means that they can be considered for adoption as part of the redistricting process. Next slide. Again, this is just a quick history, reminding us that the city did make that transition in 2018. However, we must revisit the district boundaries as we are required by law to do so after the 2020 census has given us updated population. Next slide. So here we are. We are making our way through this process that we began really back in August and September, and we are moving towards the adoption of a district map for Simi Valley in January, which would get you done far in advance of the April 2022 deadline. Next slide. Again, we are dealing with two major areas of law that govern the process, the federal law and the state law. Federal law requires that each of the four districts be relatively population-balanced, having equal population. We must comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act and ensure that district boundaries do not dilute the voting power of any protected classes of voters, and we want to avoid drawing any district boundaries where race or ethnicity is the predominant factor. California's state law gives us four rank-ordered criteria that we must consider. This law was not in place when the city transitioned to districts. However, much of this criteria was considered. So when we are looking forward to the map that will be adopted for the next decade, we do want to ensure that each district is contiguous, meaning that each district is a whole piece with no disconnected parts. We want to listen to the public and hear if there are any concerns about neighborhoods or communities of interest that are divided by boundary lines. And we want to make sure that those district boundary lines are easily identifiable. And finally, the fourth criterion under California law is to ensure that districts are compact and not bypassing nearby areas so that they can take in farther-away areas. We can consider other goals, like preserving the core of the existing districts and minimizing any changes to election cycles, particularly changes that would move voters who are expecting to vote in 2022. We don't want to move them into a district that won't be voting until 2024, if at all possible. Next slide. And this is simply the definition of communities of interest. Under state law, we do want to minimize dividing up the neighborhoods and communities of interest in the city. Community of interest is a population with common interests that should be included within a single council district so that it has the opportunity to be fairly and effectively represented. Next slide. So as I mentioned at the very beginning, the current districts are population-balanced. What we are looking for and what the courts have allowed is a total population deviation of up to 10%. And you'll see that using data from the 2020 census, Simi Valley's total population deviation across the four districts is only 3.76% compared to other cities in Ventura County. This is one of the lowest total deviations we've seen. This doesn't mean the city hasn't grown. What this means is that that growth has been relatively balanced across the four districts. So that deviation number is simply a calculation of the difference in population from the smallest district to the largest district. So when we're talking about the federal requirements, you can check off that first one for the current districts, but we still need to consider the criteria under California state law, which are those four items that I just shared. Next slide. So there are public mapping tools that have been available for some time on the website redistrictsimivalley.org. And members of the public who are here tonight or tuning in online are still able to submit their district maps. If they would like to participate in this process, they can draw all four districts or just submit their own district where they think boundaries perhaps should move from the current boundaries. And they can use the online map drawing tool or the paper map that they can download and print. Next slide. So to date, we have received one map, and I believe this map came through and it used the PDF map from the website. So I processed that map, and what you see here are the four districts that were drawn by the member of the public who submitted this map. I gave it a sort of anonymous public map 201. If we receive another public map, it will be 202, and so forth, and so on. There are significant changes, particularly to districts three and four in this map proposed by a member of the public. But what I'm highlighting on this slide here is that this map would not be legally compliant with the federal population equality requirement because the total population deviation here is 14.74%, which is above the permissible threshold of 10%. Next slide. And again, just comparing it back to the current map. And this council may direct me, your consultant, to make any changes to the current map and bring those back for consideration or to move forward considering the current map and any additional maps received by the public as we move into the new year and start to wrap up this redistricting process. I think that's the end. The next slide is, yeah, just reminding members of the public that if they want to draw a map or submit any other form of written correspondence or public comment or feedback on the draft maps, that they can do so via email or through the redistrictsimivalley.org website. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Yes. I have a question. I'd like to, if you could go back up to the map, the current map. Okay. And it's just something that stands out each time I look at the maps. But if you look at this little section right here, why is that put in District One and not in Three? That whatever, I think it's a neighborhood. It doesn't seem continuous. It seems to go against what you said earlier about the way the lines are drawn, and it may not be. I'm just asking you about it.
Well, one of the funny things that we encounter when we are drawing our district boundaries is the geography created by the U.S. Census Bureau. The Census Bureau divides every city into what are called census blocks. And you might imagine these blocks were like squares or rectangles, but in reality, they do follow roads or sometimes other boundaries and often have quite strange shapes.
Okay, let me get to the.
So what you're seeing here.
You don't have an explanation for that particular one?
I do, because that's the one I looked at when I ran the population numbers.
Okay, thank you.
And that is, that boundary right there is defined by a 2010 census block. That block has changed in 2020 and doesn't look like that. However, because this is the current map, if you wish to re-adopt the current map, you do not need to move the existing boundary to line up with the new census geography, if that makes sense, right? That the census geography changed, but your district lines could remain the same. That is legally permissible. I just can't give you population data.
Right.
Except at the block level.
Yeah, yeah. You see the way I asked the question?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Because everything else looks together and in specific districts. But that is, it didn't jump out as passing the optical test, put it that way.
Right? And, you know, in the city of Moore Park, they talk about there being a hook or a dinosaur head. And, you know, oftentimes, there are strange things in the map. And this map, I think, is, the districts are relatively compact. But yes, there are sometimes strange edges that are from the census block.
Yeah, and obviously, your numbers work. And I think that's probably the most important thing. Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Mayor, I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Yes.
Okay, so the first question is, so they can still draw a map on there. How long, you said the map tools have been up for a while. So how long have the map tools have been up there for people to use? Because I know that's what the delay was, right? So since when have they been available online for people to use?
That's a great question. I would have to look back in my email or at the website itself to see exactly what date it was edited. I will say that because of the delays, we have, for most of our clients, NDC has tried to ensure that members of the public always have at least two weeks prior to a meeting to submit maps. And in fact, I think the map we received was sent to us in October. So the paper mapping tool at least has been available since October. It should actually have a date on the very bottom of the map, too. Want to go back to that slide that has the mapping tools? There. Oh, I can't see the date. It's hidden. But on the paper mapping tool, there is a date. But on the paper mapping tool, there is a date. The online mapping tool has been much more recent.
It was available on November 10th.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and Mayor, may I ask some more questions? Were people trained on how to use that online mapping tool? I'm a geography teacher and a history teacher, and even having taught my students, it can be a little overwhelming to use that online tool and then not having had it available. And, you know, were there trainings once it was online so that people could learn how to use it?
There is a step-by-step user guide posted on the website, and I'll have to check, but NDC did produce, and I produced tutorial videos, a shorter one and a more in-depth one. And if those are not yet posted, I can get those up on the website tonight. But it really is a rather simple tool. You do need to create an account, so you do need an email address. There are, there's also extensive documentation online for any power users that want to dive deeper into the tool.
Okay, and this is my last question, if I may, Mayor.
Yes.
Were any of these tools available in a language other than English, including the tutorial videos?
Yes. So the public paper map was produced in English and Spanish as required by the Fair Maps Act. The city of Simi Valley is required to meet certain language accessibility requirements for redistricting meetings. They're not required to produce these tools in other languages. However, the city staff did opt to make the tool available, also in Spanish. And what I recommend for everyone using this online tool is that they use the Google Translate extension in Chrome, which I have tested in Spanish. It translates every part of the page, every button and instruction, and it translates it fairly well, and I am a Spanish speaker.
Okay, so the tools are available in Spanish, but not the tutorial videos. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And you don't know when the, if the videos are on there, the tutorial videos?
My guess is they're not there yet. If they are, it's only been a week or so. Do you know? No? Okay.
Okay, but you said you could upload them tonight, yes?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. I just want to make sure that people have all the tools, that they can participate. It is overwhelming to look at all the different, to balance all the populations and demographics and the communities of interest. So I just want to make sure we make it as accessible to the public as available. So this is, according to your, the report, this is not the third meeting, right? The third meeting will be on January 10th, is that correct?
So that will be the third hearing before this council. But for the, under the Fair Maps Act, there, one of the four required public hearings can be a community workshop where the council is not present. And we did hold one community workshop to fulfill that hearing requirement. If the council wishes to add additional public hearings, they can do so. But under the law, there are four that are legally required prior to adoption of the new map.
I'm just curious, was that community workshop before the online tools were available or after?
It was before.
Okay, so I would request, Mayor, if I may, that we have another community workshop since the online tools are available now so that people, now that they have access to the tools, can ask questions, you know, on how to use those tools. Is that possible? Can we do that?
Absolutely. The council can always request an additional community workshop. I think the timing of that would be somewhat difficult, given that we're going home for the holidays. However, if you think that that is something that there will be public interest and public attendance at and that it's a worthwhile investment for the city to make, then we can make it happen.
Do I need to make a motion, Mayor, to do that?
We have to go to the public...
Oh, okay. I deserve my time, but I do want to make a motion later. Thank you so much.
Okay, any others from the...
I do have a couple of questions, if that's all right, Mayor. Thank you. So you just mentioned that there was a public planning seminar, whatever meeting. How responsive was that? Can you give a sense of how many attended? What your impression was of that?
I would say for that meeting, that the attendance was pretty much, I don't know the exact number that we had, but it was pretty much in line with what we're seeing in other cities in the county. This has been an extremely difficult, as you know, period to get the public to participate in things, especially online, because of the pandemic, because redistricting isn't very sexy, because the city so recently transitioned to districts, and the members of the public were engaged in that transition and may not realize even that redistricting is happening so quickly. And I'm seeing staff has a number on how many people tuned in.
We had seven attendees from the public for the workshop on October 9th.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful for me. Thank you. And I wanted to thank, so Ian Schontz was the one who submitted the map, and he was able to do so drawing without the map tools. And I appreciate it, actually, reading his suggestions and seeing what was there. I see wisdom in it and that it, all four include some hillside homes, there was a little more sharing of industrial space, et cetera. So I see reason for it. But I understand what you've shared with us is that it doesn't fall within the parameters as far as population deviation, and I understand, total deviation, I understand that. So my question is, is that he, Mr. Schontz, could go back and adjust a map and again resubmit maybe with some adjustments that would better, that might or could fall within the parameters? Is that correct?
Yes, Councilmember Littscher, thank you for pointing that out, that Mr. Schontz can resubmit or submit a revision to his map that would comply with that requirement.
Excellent. And also, my sense is that there is no more weight paid towards a hand-drawn map, towards a online-drawn map, either given absolute equal consideration and attention, correct?
Indeed.
Okay, thank you very much. That's it, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted, one question, I just wanted to confirm so that the public's aware of it. The existing map we just drew two years ago, and the changes to our census are minimal, correct? So there's really no reason to even adjust our existing map as far as meeting all the guidelines of both the laws, is it right?
Yes, and this is important for members of the public to understand that your current map is compliant with federal law to the best of NDC's understanding, because of course, we were the firm that assisted you with the transition to districts. However, what's new is the California Fair Maps Act. And the main thing that we remind our clients to look at when their current map is population-balanced is the neighborhoods and communities of interest. So if you're hearing from any of your constituents concerns over the current boundary lines with regard to splitting neighborhoods or communities, that's the main thing we would want to look at adjusting. If not, then the council can absolutely move forward with readoption of the current map and expect that it would be legally valid.
Okay, thank you. And according to the same laws, we have to be very careful on taking away the voting rights of somebody that didn't get to vote two years ago.
So that is not actually required by law. That is something we consider a best practice traditionally in redistricting. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody from the public?
Mr. Mayor, we have no speaker cards for this item. I'll check with Zoom.
Currently, no one's hands are raised, so hold on.
No one?
Hold on one second. I guess, at this time, are there any attendees on Zoom that are wishing to speak on this public hearing item? Please raise your hand or use star nine if you're calling in on a phone. No takers.
None, okay. Okay, at this time, the hearing's closed, and we can take comments or questions from members of the city council.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, if possible?
Yes.
I would like us to have another community workshop because the online tools were not available when the public community workshop was done, and...
Let me interrupt you. Can you hold that? Let us do this motion, and then we'll ask and see if we can move forward with your motion on the extra workshop. Is that okay?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that that does not, if we close the public hearing and set the next public hearing for January 10th, that does not preclude us from having another public community workshop.
Yeah, in fact, let me ask, and maybe if they're both together is better, that's fine, too.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So, Mr. C Manager, I was just thinking, looking at calendars and everything, to make it separate would be better, and also to get your input.
Honestly, I have to look at our consultant to see if they're, if she can provide the time to provide a workshop. She's nodding her head, yes? It would be Zoom. Yeah, so we could conceivably schedule a Zoom calendar. Probably, let's see, the next hearing is scheduled for January 10th.
Correct.
You can always reschedule that to the 24th if you wanted to. That would give more time for, we could have our Zoom workshop the first week of January, maybe the first weekend of January, perhaps, and then schedule the next hearing for January 24th.
Okay, so going back to what I was suggesting is, can we leave this as its lone?
You can. The only thing I would change is, on staff recommendation on the front cover, schedule your next public hearing for January 24 instead of January 22.
Okay, and then do we need a separate motion to add the...
We can just do it. If that's the council's direction, we can just hold the workshop.
Okay, so...
We don't necessarily need a motion.
But it would have to be the council's direction. So do we want to take a vote on that?
That seems to be Mr. Gabler's indication in direction where you're headed right now, so that's, you can do that.
Okay, so first of all, we're going to do the vote on the, what's on the floor.
Right.
Okay.
Can I ask a question, Mayor? Mayor, if I could ask a question of Councilmember Louvenos. If I'm understanding the motion that you're about to propose and whether we extend this deadline, it is so that people can learn to use the online mapping tool more? Is that your concern?
Yes, when the community meeting, community workshop was done, the online tool was not available.
I understand.
So people...
But at that time, they were able to do it with longhand, they could write it. Anyone who wanted to do a map at that time could do it, has been able to do it. In fact, one submission we had was without that mapping tool. I guess my question is whether it's critical in that all along, they've been able to submit maps in longhand without that mapping tool. So I'm just trying to understand the urgency, I guess.
Well, as a teacher of 22 years, I can tell you, as a teacher and as an adult, that there are lots of people that hate math, and they don't want to do all the numbers, they don't want to do all the adding. It can be done, right? But it's definitely more arduous, it's more difficult than to have the online tools. So to have the online tools and then to not have them available, and then now they're available, but you don't have anyone to guide you on how to use them, that's what I want people to have the opportunity to do. I know that it can be done on paper, but it's very arduous. I've actually, you know, gone through that process as a geography teacher, and it's very time-consuming. So I would just like people to have the opportunity to use the tools and be able to ask experts like our demographer on how to utilize those tools.
I think that's fine because our demographer has said she can set up a Zoom meeting, so there's really not a lot of excess work for the staff, so I think it would be a good idea. It is easier to use a tool if you're using it while you're being taught, so I completely understand that. So would you like a motion, Mr. Mayor? I move to accept the public testimony received this evening, proceed with finalizing the current map without changes, and set the next public hearing for January 24, 2022 for introduction and first reading of the ordinance.
Second, if there is a second. Motion and second, call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously. May I make a, may I make a motion to have another community workshop? Or is that included in the motion? Yes?
I think it didn't need to be included in this motion, but it's going to be done.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Okay, now we're going to go back.
Back to appointments, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry?
We'll go back to appointments.
Back to appointments.
I believe we had, we have one...
Right, we have one public speaker that didn't...
We have one speaker left on two.
On two.
And then we can move on to 3A.
Exact.
So at this time, with the attendee that had their hand raised to speak during appointment, special presentations or informational reports, please raise their hand again just to verify they still want to speak.
So we lost that Zoom speaker?
Huh?
Do we have that Zoom speaker that we...
She's still on, but didn't raise her hand again, so I just wanted to make sure she still wants to speak.
Okay, Mr. Laffer.
Actually, apparently, he already spoke, so I think he already had a speak, he already had an opportunity to speak on this particular item.
Okay, and then now her hand. Yeah. All right. Marlenee A., I'm going to be moving you to panelist.
Hello, can you hear me? Hi, my name is Marlenee. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm sorry I came in a little bit late. I just wanted to show my support for Councilmember Louvenos to be appointed pro tem. I've really seen how she supported, you know, different community groups in the city, and I really just want to see her step up to this next position. I've seen her been passed on for different reasons, so I just wanted to call in to show my support for Councilmember Louvenos. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Now, we have...
Members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is Item 3A1, Appointments to the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, and Julia Ramirez will
Good evening, once again. The five-member Block Grant Advisory Committee was established by the city council in 2006. Members are appointed to provide funding recommendations on annual block grant applications. Three committee members are completing their terms on December 31st. And to fill these vacancies, the Council on Aging nominated Peter Strong, the Neighborhood Council's Joint Chairs nominated Rup Man, and the Planning Commission nominated Alan I'm not sure if all three nominees are in attendance this evening. I see Mr. Mann, Mr. Strong, and is Rup Mann here? There, okay, they're all three in attendance.
Okay. Discussion?
I haven't completed my presentation. Let's say a little bit about each one.
Sorry.
It's okay. Peter Strong has resided in Simi Valley since 1979 and in 2015 retired from a medical career after 41 years. He has been a member of the Noontime Rotary for six years and is currently serving as Vice Chair on the Executive Board for the Council on Aging. Mr. Strong served on the Neighborhood Councils and has chaired various events, both for the Council of Aging and on Noontime Rotary. Rup Mann was born and raised and also attended all Simi Valley schools. She studied at Moore Park College and then transferred to UCLA, where she received a degree in psychology. She works as a case manager supervisor on major litigation for a law firm. Ms. Mann currently serves on the Neighborhood Council and while in college volunteered at the Simi Valley Hospital. She funded a volunteer-based nonprofit organization that focuses on food drives and other collection of donations. Mr. Alan Mann is a resident of Simi Valley since 1969. Mr. Alan Mann is a resident of Simi Valley since 1969. He is a real estate broker and owns a local property management business. He was appointed to the Planning Commission in 2016, and he currently serves as chairperson. Mr. Mann has been active in the Rotary Club of Simi Valley for the past 25 years, and in years past was an active member of the Simi Valley Education Foundation. He supports many community-based organizations and all things royal band. It is recommended that the City Council approve and the mayor appoint these three nominees to the Block Grant Advisory Committee for their respective terms. I've concluded.
Thank you. That's good. Any comments or questions for staff?
I do have a comment, if that's all right. Actually, I think it's delightful, the diversity and the difference in backgrounds between these three, three people, and I'm grateful for their willingness to serve, and so if and when appropriate, I would be happy to make a motion that we go forward with their nomination.
Okay. Anybody else wish this comment?
Just to thank those who are stepping forward for volunteering your time and talents yet again, thank you so much for making our city a better place, appreciate it.
So I will move to approve and the mayor appoint Rup Mann, Peter Strong, and Alan Mann to the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee for a term commencing on January 1st, 2022, and expiring on December 31, 2024. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. We'll call for the vote.
I was gonna vote no for my planning commissioner, but I figured I better, better be nice up here.
Well, thank you very much for your volunteerism, and that's an, I did that several years ago, served on the committee, and that's a tough job. To do it correctly is, is time consuming, and you need to do good research, so thank you very much and best of luck.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is Item 3A2, Appointment of Mayor Pro Tem and Representation of City Council Board Members on Boards, Commissions, and Committees. Each year in December, the City Council considers appointment of Mayor Pro Tem and reviews City Council representation on local and regional boards, commissions, and committees. The listing of the existing boards, commissions, and committees has been provided to all council members for review, and each council member is asked to specify which boards they have interest serving on or wish to continue serving on, and to provide input on any existing committee vacancies they wish to fill. The complete list of appointments is shown as attachment aid to the staff report. It is recommended that the City Council, Boards of Directors, Board of Trustees consider the appointment to the Mayor Pro Tem, Vice Chair, President Pro Tem positions, and review the assignments on the attached listing, make changes as desired, or fill vacancies as necessary. Department heads are available to answer any questions you may have specific to any boards, commissions, or committees. This concludes staff's presentation.
Yes, I'll be first to speak. There's been a lot of controversy about this position. A close look has been made at the method by which we select a council member for Mayor Pro Tem, and based on my research and based on some recent decisions, I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Mike Judge as Mayor Pro Tem. So obviously, we'll be looking for a second and a vote.
The only reason I won't vote seconded is because Mike is up for reelection next year, and that's kind of been a standard practice in that we don't have the person, Mayor Pro Tem, being up for election that year, seeing as how sometimes it can give the impression that it's, gives him an advantage, I think. We can discuss that, that's just.
Yeah, I think we can make an exception on such an item, and it's not an exception because there's nothing in writing that dictates that we, as a sitting Mayor Pro Tem cannot run for office. There's not a rule, there's nothing in writing that says that's the case. And again, I have to say, based on some of the recent decisions, we need someone that's gonna move forward with the city's best interests in everything he or she does. I think that person is Mike Judge.
Mayor, may I, may I have discussion, may we have discussion on this?
Yes. I'm going back, I don't know why, I, half the time I can't tell if it's you or Elaine speaking, so forgive me for looking back and forth trying to figure out.
I just want to make sure we can have discussion, is that all right? I have, well, I'd like to make a motion to, you haven't had a second on your motion, so I'd like to move to appoint myself as Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, before we do that, let's confirm with the city clerk, there was no second on my motion, correct?
Correct, there's no second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ruth, go ahead.
I move to appoint myself as Mayor Pro Tem, and may I give a rationale?
Sure.
Here's the reason. My question is this to my colleagues on the dais. Why wouldn't you want to appoint someone who has demonstrated her commitment to approving the city? Why wouldn't you want someone who has given up hundreds of hours with my family to go to community events, attend conferences, advocate for the city to bring resources for workers, families, veterans, seniors, our youth, and our community? Why wouldn't you want a Mayor Pro Tem who has attended countless Clean Power Alliance, Youth Council, Task Force for Homelessness, V-COg, Ventura County, and city events? Why wouldn't you want someone as Mayor Pro Tem who has met with thousands of residents, business owners, workers, and students in Simi Valley over the past three years to listen to their concerns and connect with the resources in the community? Why wouldn't you want someone who has encouraged civic participation, even from residents who have led recall efforts against her? Why wouldn't you want someone who can keep her cool in the face of those threats, including some in the audience right now? I've demonstrated my commitment to making the city a better place through my actions and not just my words. As the first and only woman of color on this City Council, I have maintained decorum and dignity in contrast with the death threats, threats of violence, constant harassment that continues to persist because my colleagues will not denounce threats against me. Why wouldn't you want someone who is passionate about serving Simi Valley and its citizens, as our public comment stated? Why wouldn't you want someone who gives hope and a future to the women of color in this city who aspire to be future public servants? According to the city attorney, there is no ordinance on the record. We have the discretion to appoint me as Mayor Pro Tem, a position that will not benefit me as a candidate, since I am not running for a position that represents Simi Valley based on the recent redistricted maps for Congress. I am merely here to be a public servant, as I have been for the past three years. That is my statement. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Again.
Have a motion and looking for a second.
I was gonna say, again, I will not second on, based on the same explanation, is that Councilmember Louvenos has been running for an election next year, and so again, I want to stay with that. This is my reason for not doing a second.
You discussed this prior to the meeting?
No, we discussed this last year.
Okay, well, we have a former council member in the audience who had set policy previously that this would be on a rotational basis, specifically so that we would avoid partisanship. And this is my last year in office. I, I'm not running for City Council again, and I would like the opportunity to serve as a public servant in the Mayor Pro Tem capacity. I have been at a number of events with all of you, with all of my colleagues on the dais, and I've been at events by myself, like the laying of the wreaths at the, with the Daughters of the American Revolution this Saturday, as well as a number of other events. And that's okay, we take turns, but that just shows my commitment to the city. The fact that I'm willing to do that, to give up hundreds of hours with my family to go to these events and serve our public, our residents, even those who disagree with me, even those in the audience who harass me, that just shows my commitment to the city. And that's all that I'm asking to do, to be given the opportunity to be a public servant and to give those, especially women of color and young girls of color, someone to aspire to be.
Okay, we have a motion, no second yet.
Okay, in light of that, I move to appoint Elaine Listor as Mayor Pro Tem. I think she is deserving of the opportunity to serve.
I think we need to wait for the clerk to declare. Thank you.
The motion failed for lack of a second. No more motions.
Mayor, may I make another motion?
Okay, that's, okay, yes, you may.
I move to appoint Councilwoman Elaine Listor as Mayor Pro Tem.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. We'll call for the vote.
The motion passes with Mayor Mashburn voiding no. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on?
Wait, are we gonna switch right now? Yeah, did anybody look at the committees, or if you haven't, I don't see any reason why we can't move that till next meeting's agenda to give us time to research and determine what we want.
And I did have a question about it, but we can move it to next meeting, that's fine with me.
Okay, with the approval of the, of the board, I'd like to postpone it till next meeting.
It's fine with me, fine with me.
I just want clarification, does that mean we stay on the committees then until the next meeting?
Yes.
Because I know we have a V-COg meeting coming up, so I just want to make sure. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, are we gonna do the switch right now?
Uh, definitely next meeting.
Okay, good.
We have to change computers.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is 3B1, a presentation by Waste Management regarding landfill recycling center operations, and City Manager Gabler will introduce the presenters.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, a while back, Councilmember Listor, with the consensus of the council, requested a presentation by Waste Management on landfill operations. Here tonight is Mark Grady, District Manager for Waste Management, and he does have a PowerPoint for you and is available for questions afterwards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, obviously, Mr. Mayor, City Manager Gabler, and City Councilmembers, staff in attendance. My name is Mark Grady, I'm the District Manager for our Simi Valley Landfill and Recycling Center. I've been in the waste industry for 13 years, I've been with Waste Management for the past eight. I would also like to introduce Lisa Hemingway, who is part of our Community Relations Department. She's been a part of Waste Management for the past 30 years and a huge part of our community involvement, which we'll talk about a little bit more. I also want to make a note, Scott Tignak was the District Manager for this facility for the past 20 years, I'm sure some of you may know him. He's now in our Director of Disposal Operations position at the facility. He oversees Southern California and our Hawaiian operations, so good for him, we're excited. I would like to say, thank you for the invitation this evening, and with that, we can get into the presentation. If we want to go to the next slide. So we'll go through a quick agenda, we're gonna look at our facility at a glance, what we do with, from a community standpoint, we'll talk about the memorandum of understanding with the city and the agreement we have, and then working for sustainable tomorrow. I'm gonna bring up a project that I'm very excited to talk about, that's gonna be coming in the next couple of years. Let me go on to the next slide, please. It looks like the presentation changed slightly on the font, I apologize for that, but at a glance, Waste Management is North America's largest environmental services provider. As part of that, there's a huge commitment to finding the best way to reuse discarded material, not only landfilling it, but what can we do to actually reuse the material in recycling or in other ways. Simi Valley Landfill and Recycling Center is an incredible example of that commitment. We're not just a solid waste management facility, we have a co-mingled recycling program, we do construction and demolition processing, we have organics recycling, which is gonna be hugely important as 1383 rolls out and more depth over the next few years. We also have some wildlife habitat conservation we'll discuss in a little bit more detail when we get deeper into the presentation. There is a photo of the facility there, we're located off Madera Road at the west end of the 118 freeway in Simi Valley. We go on to the next slide, please. So talk about our operations in a little bit more depth. We obviously are a solid waste management facility, you know, Simi Valley landfill. The landfill operations are really a function of items that you and I discard at our homes and businesses on a daily basis, that material is safely and compliantly managed and covered on a daily basis. I brought up some of our other operations, which is really where we see growth in the future, you know, you look at our co-mingled recycling, we accept curbside recycling, the materials you guys place in your recycling bins, or our businesses try to recycle, we accept that, we actually transfer that to some of our local material recovery facilities. Sun Valley Recycle Park is a brand-new facility in the valley that takes a lot of this material, processes it further, and delivers that to end markets, so it can be reused in other products and obviously avoided from landfilling. Simi Valley Landfill also has a construction and demolition processing center, we accept material such as wood, concrete, carpet, things that you see in normal construction and demolition activities, and we process that, and through that process, we're able to eliminate about 75% of that material from disposal. Most importantly is our, is organics recycling, I think, for the upcoming years. Traditionally, organics recycling has been predominantly green waste, wood waste, your grass clippings. As we move more into the future, especially with Senate Bill 1383, food waste is gonna become a bigger part of that, and Simi Valley is set up to be able to support that with our communities. With that, we can go to the next slide. Talk about, a little bit about community vitality. I've been the District Manager of this facility for about a year now, and something I've been very impressed with is the passion I've seen from the people at our facility, our employees, particularly on the community engagement side. Lisa, who I introduced earlier, does an exceptional job from a community, community involvement perspective, and also wildlife habitat conservation perspective. Our facility has over 500 acres of conservation land that we've dedicated. These land includes pollinator garden, native species corridors, owl boxes, and Lisa's been an integral part of all that, but it also gives us a rare opportunity to work with community organizations, schools, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, to show them that interface between the environment and what we do in the waste and recycling world. And, you know, just for the long term, I see a, you know, as this essential public service continues into the future, things will change. You know, we talked about 1383, that's gonna change the landscape of organics recycling, and we're gonna be set up to support the local community for the, for the long term here. That would be the next slide. Just a highlight of some of the memorandum of understanding agreements we have with the city, this agreement's been in effect for over 10 years, and it provides over $1 million a year of economic benefit to the city. You know, there's a lot of things listed up there from that agreement. Some of the highlights are the police training facility, community project grants, 118 freeway litter removal, household hazardous waste events, street cleaning services, and there's many others, but it's, it's definitely a big part of how we can give back to the community in many different ways. We can keep going to something I'm very excited about on the next slide. So I brought up working for sustainable tomorrow. My background with Waste Management started as an environmental compliance manager. I've worked at various facilities, I've been with, supporting our Simi Valley landfill since 2016. This particular project is probably the project I've been most excited to. This particular project is probably the project I've been most excited to work on. Waste Management's intending to create a state-of-the-art renewable natural gas facility at the Simi Valley landfill. In doing this, we're gonna take the landfill-derived biogas, the naturally occurring gas from the waste, and convert that into pipeline-quality gas. This will be connected into the natural gas grid and then offset fossil fuel usage from natural gas in the city. In doing this, we're gonna offset over 100,000 tons a year of greenhouse gas emissions. It's a huge investment for our company, it's an $80 million facility, and we're really, really excited to put the city and the county at the forefront of emissions reduction technology for landfills and really just looking for a sustainable tomorrow. And with that, I didn't have anything else, that's pretty quick, but I want to say thank you. I appreciate your time, I appreciate being reached out to about what we're doing right now and some of the highlights. We obviously value our relationship with you and thank you and happy holidays.
Thank you. As long as I've been on the council and then sometime before, Waste Management's always been a good resident, I don't want to say a good neighbor, good resident here, and participates in every part of this city and everything we do. And I, for one, certainly appreciate all that you've done, so thank you. And please pass that on to your staff.
Yeah, no, the team at this facility does an incredible job. Our employees have been there a very long time, we have a lot of 30-plus-year guys and they're definitely heavily involved in the city, so thank you very much.
You got it.
Mayor, may I ask a few questions?
Sure.
Thank you. I have three questions for you. First, I want to commend Waste Management. I'm with Troop 689 Boy Scouts and they always come and help out, and you do have some amazing employees, you guys do an amazing... I call it a party, but I know it's like a 5K run. And you allow the Boy Scouts of Simi Valley and Ventura County to use the 500 acres there, so I want to thank you on behalf of the Boy Scouts of America, because I've been there often and I appreciate it. All the campfires we got to have there. My questions are this. The first one is with regard to windy days. You know, Simi Valley gets very windy. What do you do to cover the trash on windy days? Or are there days that it's just so windy you can't cover it?
That's a great question.
Are there tarps, are there, you know, is there...
No, it's a great question. So our facility actually has various plans in place to adjust our operations on days that have various weather conditions, be it windy, rainy, you know. It's not always sunny in Southern California, no matter what everyone says. But with that, you know, we have changes in our operations that we can minimize windblown litter. We do close and cover our trash every day, no matter what. So there will never be exposed trash overnight at our facility.
Okay, so at night you guys cover it?
No matter what.
If during the day it's windy, then does it get covered too, or...
We'll cover as we go during the day. But there are other things that we put in place to help manage and prevent that. And I think, I know that our team does a really good job doing that.
Okay, wonderful. I have two more questions. One is with regard to your RNG project. I'm thrilled that you guys are gonna offset greenhouse gas emissions, especially regarding, you know, with regard to the climate change that we're facing and the wildfires and the PSS events and the extreme weather. Thank you for doing your part to help our climate. Is there any possibility, or what kind of safety are you guys putting in? And you can come back, if you don't want to answer these questions, it's okay. Because I know people are concerned about, you know, the Aliso Canyon, you know, gas facility. So I'm assuming that there are safety procedures in place for this project, when and if it takes off?
Yep, and this isn't... I know there's a lot of fear and concern around the Aliso Canyon facility. This isn't going to be a gas storage facility. So it is quite different. And there'll be a long list of safety procedures. We still have to go through building and safety and all the proper channels to ensure that this facility is constructed, you know, safely, compliantly and all that. We're still a couple of years away from final construction. We will keep the city, you know, informed of where we're at and what we're doing over the next couple of years.
Okay, and we welcome you to come back when you get it up and running. And my last question is, you talked about demolition a lot, and, you know, a lot of our residents work for Waste Management. What kind of protective gear do you provide for employees who may encounter toxic or maybe even radioactive waste from the demolition?
So our... when you look at waste and recycling industry just in general, it is a dangerous industry, no matter where you go. The Simi Valley facility has maintained an impeccable safety record for many years, predating myself. Our facility does have controls in place right at our gate, where the trucks come, that can detect those types of things that you've mentioned. But with that, I do know through training and safety gear, we're able to mitigate a lot of those concerns. We also minimize employees actually touching material. We use equipment and engineering controls to do that.
So cranes and things like that?
Other heavy equipment.
Dumping, yeah.
Yeah, yes.
I don't know all the words of all the trucks that are there, but...
Yep. But there are controls in place.
Okay, and, yeah, I'm just saying that because I know we had a couple of buildings demolished and, you know, the San Zan Field Lab, and so people were concerned about that. But I just want to make sure that you're providing protective gear for the employees. Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Just for clarity though, Mark, you don't accept radioactive waste?
No. So our facility, you know, just for clarity across the board, we are a permitted solid waste facility. We do not accept hazardous wastes. Those materials are dealt with in other parts of the state and outside the county of Ventura.
Thank you, Mayor. I have some follow-up questions, actually, to that last comment. I have a, we have a Simi Valley constituent who works in construction, and he was very concerned, as he indicated in some of his recent meetings, that as they were discussing removing soils and putting foundations, this is in downtown LA area, that he was told by several people that the preferred dumping site for all of these soils, material, et cetera, was Simi Valley. And so my question is one, he was very alarmed because he lives here. He didn't like that answer that he was getting from the other people at the table. So I guess my question is, how are we keeping contaminated soils that might come from excavation out of our... and how is that measured?
Now, so it's a wonderful question, and it's good that the community is willing to engage you in that way. Our facility has a very strict acceptance criteria. It's actually regulated by the state. We require analytical and what we call profiles, but things that detail what we would be accepting prior to even taking the material. And there's a very in-depth process for how that comes into the facility and how that's managed. We're just a part of a regional network of maybe 30 or so facilities that accept material. That particular job he may have been on, we may have been a facility that they wanted to send it to. Waste Management has very strict acceptance criteria, so companies that have integrity tend to want to work with Waste Management, and it may not just be our Simi Valley facility, but one of other regional facilities.
And so are those soils actually measured when they show up? Or is it, this is a report that's generated at the construction site that determines where it goes? How is that determined?
There will be multiple samples taken at those facilities, where it's being generated from, prior to it even leaving.
Okay, so that's where the report's generated, and then at that point they determine, assuming all are honest and above board, where it can be taken? And what is our threshold compared to other nearby sites?
Well, I mentioned, we're a non-hazardous facility, so we do not accept anything hazardous. The job that he was on, if they had hazardous constituents, they would be sending that to other facilities, not our Simi Valley facility.
Okay. And I'm gonna follow up with him and get, and we may be talking some more.
Not a problem, you can reach out and if yourself or him wants a tour, I'd be more than happy to.
And I appreciate that, I very much do that. Second, I had another constituent reach out, again, his concern, he's in the building construction trade. And what he was finding is that in, that a lot of construction waste is bypassing other sites and coming to Simi Valley for dumping. At least that's what he was finding. And again, he lives in Simi Valley and didn't like that idea so much. He was told that it was because of cost, that it was more cost-effective to even pay the extra gas to get it here because the dumping rates were lower than other areas. Can you speak to the cost of dumping here versus others and why that might be the case?
It is hard to talk about cost for, you know, facilities that I'm not a part of. I do know that the rates for our facility are approved by the county, so our rates may be better for people to bring material to us because of that. However, a lot of the construction and demolition material that comes to us is actually smaller mom-and-pop companies. You know, it's a lot of pickup trucks and small contractors. And that's where we see most of our construction and demolition waste come from.
Okay, so there's not a overseeing board that sets rates for all the surrounding?
No, no, most facilities are able to charge whatever they feel that day.
Right.
Yeah. And as you can understand with that, you know, it's... it can be challenging dealing with some of the COVID challenges we've all dealt with, the inflationary costs, because we want to make sure that we're good to be able to service our public and local community first.
Thank you, Mark, appreciate it.
T.D.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a couple of comments. I think I've mentioned this to Lisa before. My father was a trash man for the first 10 years of my life. So I know how important it is and how hard of a job it is, and they really are unsung heroes.
Absolutely.
So I just want to say thank you for that. And the second part is, they're also the best entertainment for my two-year-old grandson. So there is a, my daughter's gonna kill me, she didn't want all the moms in Simi to know. But there's a couple of parking spaces up by the office at Waste Management. You back your car in, you sit in the back, we feed him a donut, and all the garbage trucks go by. And he waves, and they wave, and they honk their horns, and it's just... it's just such wonderful entertainment for the little guys. You know, they're so fascinated by the garbage truck and the trash man. In fact, he was a trash, Waste Management trash man for Halloween, as where the mayor was telling me, he saw one at the street fair, too, a little boy. So you guys do a great job. I really appreciate that in many ways. Also, as long as I've been on the board and, or, excuse me, on the dais and even before, I've noticed how well Waste Management works with the city of Simi Valley. And you're a great partner and a great resident, like you said. And I think it's, I'm very happy with our relationship. We hope it continues, and we really appreciate the CDBG, or, excuse me, the donations that you guys give on an annual basis, and I think the community does too. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next item on the agenda is 3C1, informational report by youth council, and Kristin Tignak is here to introduce the presenter.
Ah, sorry. Mateos Broke will be presenting the youth council informational report tonight. He is on a flight, currently going to visit extended family, so we do have a video of his presentation. And also, whoops, sorry. I can answer any questions if you have any afterwards. Sorry.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, and members of the City Council. Thank you...
No, what happened? Sorry about that.
...for having me. My name is Mateos Broke, and I'm currently a junior at San Sisana High School. This is my second term serving on the Simi Valley Youth Council, and tonight I will be providing an update of youth council actions and activities. First, I am pleased to announce that we finalized our annual work plan. We will address the following five main issues. Number one, reduce the stigma surrounding mental health issues. Number two, decrease sexual assault by increasing awareness of the issue. Number three, research areas of student concern related to internet access at schools. Number four, reduce discrimination and facilitate increased gender inclusion on school campuses. And number five, research ways to assist those that have been victims of sexual assault or harassment. Next, we formed six committees to focus on these issues and upcoming events. Mental health, school infrastructure, sexual assault awareness and prevention, fundraising, talent show, and youth summit. We also reviewed our finalist of potential mental health panelists for the 2022 Youth Town Hall with Tyler McAnney, Education Leadership Coordinator for the Ronald Reagan Presidential Foundation and Institute. New this year, the youth council recommended that a local team serve as a panelist. The Reagan Reeducation Team will be letting us know in the near future who the confirmed panelists are. Youth council members also audition for all the main roles of the Youth Town Hall speaking roles. I am pleased to announce that I was selected as the event's emcee, and I'm honored and excited for this opportunity. We would like to thank the Ronald Reagan Presidential Foundation and Institute for hosting our November 16th meeting, as well as treating us to a taco dinner. During our last meeting, we were joined by Kelly Beely, the Director of Simi Valley Public Library. She shared with us about the evolution of libraries and how the library was gathering community input for their next five-year strategic plan. Youth council members provided recommendations on what teenagers would like to see in the library to increase popularity, such as game rooms, cafes, robotic workshops, and more. During our last meeting, we also celebrated our accomplishments of 2021 with a pizza dinner donated by Councilmember Lovenos. Not only would we like to thank Councilmember Lovenos, we'd also like to thank Anna Medina and our coordinator, Kristen Tignak, for their kindness of giving us goodie bags. Last Saturday, we participated in the library's Community Reads Finale event to promote our Rising Strong, A Path Through Hardship book to actions community art project. We've extended the deadline to date to turn in artwork on our pre-cut paper tiles through January 5th. At the end of the month, we will display the community art project at the library, as well as featuring the project on the Cultural Arts Center Virtual Art Center website. We would like to thank everyone that joined us on December 15th as we hosted a free community art session with the library, where residents of all ages painted, drew, or sketched papered art tiles for the project. We have so many talented artists in our amazing city. Looking forward to 2022, our committees will be put into action at full power, working to make Simi Valley even a better place to live. I personally expect this term to be incredibly successful, and I can't wait to see what we're going to be able to accomplish. If you haven't already, please make sure to follow us at @SimivalyUth council on Instagram, Facebook, and YouTube to stay updated on our upcoming activities and to see all of the original content from our hard work and social media committee. Thank you all so much for your support, and thank you once again, Mayor Mashburn and the City Council members, for allowing me to speak tonight. Have a great evening and wishing everyone happy holidays and a safe and joyful new year.
All right, thank you. Good report, I wish you were here so we could all applause and make sure you heard it. But thank you very much. At this time, we're gonna, wait a minute, I'm getting a thing. At this time, we're gonna take a 10-minute break.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we're going to continue with the public hearing portion of the meeting, Agenda Item 4B.
Thank you, and we'll call the meeting back to order.
Thank you. A public hearing to consider a request from RS Corporation for the approval of a tentative parcel map, TP-S-689, to subdivide a residentially zoned parcel into three parcels and a zone change Z-S-2021-0003 to change the zoning designation from residential low density RL to residential medium density RM for a 0.73 acre site located on the west side of Naples Court, approximately 240 feet south of Royal Avenue, adoption of a negative declaration, adoption of a resolution, and introduction of an ordinance. The readings are as follows. Resolution number 2021-51, a resolution of the city council of the City of Seamey Valley approving tentative parcel map TP-S-689 and adopting the project's negative declaration to allow the subdivision into three parcels of a 0.73 acre parcel located at 310 Royal Avenue. And ordinance number 1330, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Seamey Valley approving zone change number Z-S-2021-0003 and adopting the negative declaration to change the zoning designation of a 0.73 acre site located at 310 Royal Avenue from residential low density RL to residential medium density RM. And Sean Gibson and Naren Gunasakera will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, members of the city council. As she said, Naren Gunasakera, our associate planner, will provide a presentation.
Good evening. The applicant RS Corporation requests approval of a tentative parcel map to subdivide a residentially zoned parcel into three lots and a zone change from residential low density RL to residential medium density RM for a 0.73 acre site located west of Naples Court, approximately 240 feet south of Royal Avenue. The project also includes a negative declaration. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the project on November 3rd, 2021. The project site is shown here. It is a flag lot with the flag portion of the lot fronting Royal Avenue and the majority of the lot fronting Naples Court. There are existing detached single-family residences to the north, south, and east, with a church to the west. The site currently takes driveway access from Naples Court, as shown in this photo. Parcel 1 will be 10,856 square feet, and parcel 2 will be 10,155 square feet, with both parcels fronting Naples Court. Parcel 3 will be 10,837 square feet and will be located to the west of the other two parcels. Access to parcel 3 will be via a 20-foot driveway that will also be used as a utility easement across the north end of parcel 1. No grading or construction is proposed with this parcel map, as there is no planned development entitlement accompanying the application. It is anticipated that custom single-family homes will be built on the individual lots at a later date. The project site is shown here in red. As you can see, the proposed parcels are compatible in size with the existing adjacent RM zone parcels, which range from 8,000 to 20,000 square feet. The request also includes a zone change to change zoning designation of the site from residential low density RL to residential medium density RM. As shown in the exhibit, the subject parcel is surrounded to the north, south, and east by RM zoning. With regard to the zone change, the proposed RM zone is a compatible zoning district with the general plan land use designation of medium density. The proposed lots meet the minimum lot size and width requirements of the RM zone. The project density of 4.1 units per acre meets the required density of the zone and the general plan designation of 3.6 to 5.0 units per acre. The site is suitable for the proposed type and density of development as laid out in the staff report findings. The Planning Commission recommends that the city council approve the parcel map, zone change, and adopt the project's negative declaration. This concludes my presentation, and staff are available for questions.
Okay, first thing I have to ask, is there any ex parte communications to report? No one?
I did speak with one member of the neighborhood council who has, who shared opinions on this.
Okay, neighborhood council member?
Neighborhood council member.
I did, too.
Okay, and myself. None from, okay, thank you. We got your report. To the app, well, first of all, we'll start with questions, staff. DeeDee.
I just, hi, thank you. I just have a quick question, just in regards to the zoning change. Is a zoning change required to do the subdivision? And if not, is what is the reason that we're doing it?
It is required to meet the minimum lot size for the three lots.
Okay, so when I went, I went on our website and was looking at it, and it didn't really give minimum for the residential, so, or for the, excuse me, it didn't give the minimum lot size in the area I was looking at, so that's probably why I'm asking the question. Sorry, it just told me that residential low, you could have 2.1 to 3.5 dwelling units per acre, and then residential medium, you could have 3.6 to 5.0 units per acre. So, we do have a minimum lot size for the residential low?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a question for you. Was, did the applicant put up one of the signs as required normally?
Yes.
In the neighborhood?
Yeah, they're required to put up one sign, which they put up on Naples Court.
On Naples Court?
Yes.
Okay, and you verified that that was up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And did they do any reach out to the neighborhood?
I, I will let the applicant answer that, I'm not sure.
Okay, is the applicant here tonight?
Yes.
Okay, we'll wait till we invite them up. My question is, not being a planner, if you'd go back to the, one of the slides of the current layout, the one house is going to be raised, the house that's on the current lot.
Yes.
Okay. And we end up with the three lots. I'm curious about that 20-foot behind the existing homes. I think it showed better, well, it shows down lower on this view.
You've got the, you've got the flag, the flag part of it, and then this is the easement. This is...
Okay, and the flag part of it is a driveway?
No, the flag part of it is currently just landscape. There's a, there's, there's power poles across it.
Uh huh.
So, it, it's not really possible to use it as a driveway. One of the conditions of the parcel map is that they're going to have to abandon any attempt to have access from there onto Royal.
Okay, so, help me out here. Would that eventually, if you could go back to that other slide, I think that's... Yeah, the aerial shot there. So, is there any intention? Will that mean that what's going to be accessed off of Royal?
No, they will need to abandon any access off Royal as a condition of the map.
Okay, okay. And then, my other question is, with SB9, are there any guarantees that if we move forward with this zone change, or is there anything that says they can't then turn around and put four houses per lot because of SB9? In other words, are we going to have a condition where this is going to be one single-family dwelling on each lot? Or after we do the zone change, because we're not approving the dwellings, then will the applicant, do you have any information from them? We can ask them when they come up, but is there any intention of them then building something entirely different with more units?
We have no control over requiring or not requiring SB9 units on these lots. Every house in that cul-de-sac is subject to SB9, and they all could achieve a second unit if they chose.
Provided they're single-family residences.
Okay, okay. So, they can tell you, okay, we're going to build a single-family dwelling, and then as soon as they build it, turn around and build either ADUs or additional dwellings?
One thing that, one of the provisions are, they have to be under different ownerships, so a developer cannot build all three properties with SB9 units, just one of the three. You cannot build adjacent units under same ownership. If all three of them were sold to three different property owners, then perhaps, just like every other house in that cul-de-sac, they may choose to create SB9 units.
Okay, but as far as, there's no conditioning that we can impose on them as far as a condition of the zoning change that you'll build one house?
Correct.
It wouldn't do us any good because...
There's no conditioning, but a public hearing coming up tonight, we will provide you a few options to help control some of those situations.
Okay, that, that's what I'm getting at. Do you understand my concern for the residences? If, I would think if I lived there and they're going to build a house on a smaller lot that kind of matches ours, that'd be fine, but...
This answer right now will be preempted by state law, so the short answer is no.
Yeah.
As far as the conditional zoning.
But if I say, yeah, go ahead, and then it turns into an apartment complex, then, then that would be probably something I would go against.
I do understand your concern.
Okay, and there's no way to address that concern?
Those concerns would, could be addressed under objective development standards, which we'll start looking at in the upcoming public hearing. This, this is not unlike any other subdivision in the city, so anything else that comes forward, that's some of these pre-existing tentative applications that have been in the process for three or four years, those were not necessarily envisioned at this point, but now this applicant came across the situation, but the applicant will provide you more information on their, their intention.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, we actually do have Diana Verrot, who is a legal expert in this area, and she's on, on the next item. If she's on now and she's been hearing, I would invite her to add anything further if she would like it. So Diane, are you there?
I am here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Do you have anything else to add other than what I've said and Sean has said?
So, I would agree with what's been said so far to the extent that we would be preempted with respect to not applying SB9 to these lots once they become single-family residentially zoned lots. So, once they are single-family residentially zoned lots, they are subject to SB9 in the same way that any other lot would be. As Sean mentioned, though, it would be basically each individual lot owner after that would be subject to that limitation with respect to the owner occupancy requirement if there were to be any further lot splits. But with respect to development, that would depend on the local requirement with respect to owner occupancy if the city chooses to go that direction, which I believe is built into the draft ordinance at the moment.
Which is coming up.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Diane.
Elaine?
If I could ask just a follow-up question on what's being, being asked right now. So, my understanding then, Sean, is that as of today, December 20th, if we approved this, it would be three individual residential lots, medium density. If we did not approve it, come January 1st, 2022, if, if the property owner was the resident in that house, for instance, they could, in essence, do a lot split at that time, correct? You know, with SB9, and then put two homes on each of those lots, and then secondary units as well. So, so in essence, it could become four homes, correct? So, if we do nothing, they want to do three homes today, if we do nothing, January 1st, it could become four homes, correct, given SB9? If we do something today, depending on ownership of the property, et cetera, and as you point out, residency, resident owners, et cetera, theoretically, those three residence homes could also be then split, each of them, if they were so owned and resided. Is that accurate to say?
Your, your description is pretty accurate.
Okay. Just want to understand. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
So, the, the lots that are adjacent, and thank you so much for pointing out the square footage, so the, splitting this parcel would make the individual, the three individual parcels comparable, right? Some of them even larger than adjacent lots, right? There's, I see some lots that are 8,700 square feet, right? And these lots are going to be 10, all three of them, each parcel is over 10,000 square feet, correct? That's what I'm looking at the map.
Correct.
Yes. So, these are actually larger than some of the adjacent parcels in the neighborhood. And then, yes, even if we, if we approve tonight, this, the, the zone change, it would be no different than any other of the neighbors also having SB9 applied to them, correct? So, they're not at any more advantage because it seems to me that the purpose of the developer asking for this parcel split is so that he can build these, custom-built homes is what you stated, is that correct? Single-family homes that will be built on there?
That is the intention, however, they do not have a planned development application in front of us right now, it's just a lot split.
Okay, but in order for it to become four separate, you know, for them to get SB9, they would have to sell each parcel to individual owners, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so the developer can't go in there and, and according to SB9, they can't even build apartments, right? Because that's a different density, is that correct?
Right, there would be second units.
So, the most, the most, once they sell, after, if we approve the zone change, right, they'd have to sell each parcel to individual owners, is that correct?
At least two of the three lots, yes.
And then, the owners would have the same rights as every other landowner on that street, right? To apply SB9, and that could be an ADU, a junior ADU, all the way up to a fourplex, yes?
Yes, the, each property on that lot will be subject to the same standards.
Okay, and again, they have to be owned, so it's not us giving an advantage to the developer, they still have to be owned by individual property owners.
That, that is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that and to make sure the audience knew that that's what has to happen in order for that to happen, and that no one's going to build apartments there, because that, that's not what SB9 allows for. It does allow for that diverse housing, you know, duplexes and fourplexes, but it's not any higher density than any of the other lot owners on that street.
Yeah, based on the findings on the staff report, it is consistent with the proposed zoning designation, which is the residential medium zone for that street. So, the findings indicate that the subdivision would comply with the zoning and the zone change.
Okay, thank you very much.
DeeDee?
I have one more question, you kind of brought it up there. It might be a legal question, in regards to ownerships, for example, this is a corporation asking us to do this, are we able to go down and layer through when some, let's say, you can be a corporation, you can be owned by an LLC, who can be a managing member of another LLC, who can also be a general partnership down here, I deal with that in banking all the time. Is that something that the city would able, be able to document is the actual ownership? So that one corporation, so I don't, I don't open an LLC today named ABC, now I'm going to do one XYZ, now I'm going to do one, you know, DEJ. So, that's what I, is that something we've looked at or that can be addressed?
We normally don't, and they could certainly create three LLPs, and under each ownership, it could be the same partners, but it's under, technically under the ownership of it, it will be an individual LLC or P.
And there would be some residency requirements, right? Or we're not sure?
They would still have to comply with SB9 requirements, yes, which is part of the next public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lumenos.
I just want to know if we had any public comments on this, Mayor.
We do have one.
The applicant's here for...
Yeah, we would like to hear from the applicant. Are they on Zoom or are they here?
They're on Zoom, I'll get them. Dennis, if you could please, Mr. Hunter, if you could please unmute and start sharing your screen, I'm going to cancel my screen sharing.
Okay. All right, can you hear me now and see my screen?
We can.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, City Council members, my name's Dennis Hunter, I'm the owner of Buckeye Surveying and Engineering, and I represent my client, Robin Salami, the property owner. So, I'd like to start with my presentation. As you can see, a question was asked earlier regarding the, the posting of the sign, so as you can see here, it was originally posted for the Planning Commission meeting and then updated with the City Council meeting date and time for tentative parcel map number S-689 and zone change S-2021-003. This issue with SB9 came up at the Neighborhood Council meeting when a question was asked, what was the property owner's intent to build on the property? I explained to the Neighborhood Council that my client's plan was to build three single-family custom homes by other builders, and he was going to build on one of the lots. At the time, this is right around the time that Governor Newsom signed SB9, and so out of the sake of transparency, I made it aware to the attendees and the Neighborhood Council that what future buyers of the lots may do can't be controlled by my client because SB9 would go into effect on January 1st, and the, the city would likely be adopting their own local ordinance to comply with that bill, which you're doing tonight after this hearing case. So, there was a lot of confusion, I think, within the Neighborhood Council Board, and they eventually decided to vote to oppose the project. However, as the record states of the Planning Commission, it was a 5-0 unanimous vote, and I believe the, the planning commissioners all understood that this is a project standing on its own, and there is, it's not a SB9-related project, as I've indicated in this one slide here. And I think it's important to understand the project timeline, to understand the difference between this project and an SB9 project. The application for tentative parcel map S-689 was applied for October 27th, 2017, and we had our first Development Advisory Committee on November 29th, 2017. Senate Bill 9 wasn't introduced into the state legislature until December 7th, 2020. So, it's always been my client's intent to process a parcel map to create three lots for future construction of custom homes. And again, this parcel map application predates SB9 by three-plus years, and so I've included screenshots of the city application highlighting that the project is for three residential lots, the submittal of the original application documents on October 27th, 2017, as well as the first Development Advisory Committee meeting. And so, I would, I would like that... And so I would, I would like that SB nine not to be considered at all with respect to this project application. One of the reasons is there's already a ballot initiative in progress for the November 2022 elections where the realistic implementation of SB nine may never see fruition if the voter referendum is, is passed, which would give local agencies the right to control their, their own land use zoning. So enough for SB nine, and I'll move on to the rest of my presentation. I'd like to point out that the existing property under the general plan is already designated medium density, and so the person, the purpose of the zone change is to bring the zoning into conformance with the general plan designation. Again, as you see, the, from the zoning map, the existing parcel is residential low, surrounded by residential medium on the south, east, and north. Another interest of note is the devil's in the details. This existing property, it's made up of two assessors parcels, but in the conveyance deeds, there's actually three separate parcels defined by meets and bounds. The overall acreage of the site is point seven-three acres, and so the project is consistent with the general plan coming in on the, the lower range of the density at four-point-one-one units per acre compared to the range of three-point-six to five units per acre. As I mentioned, the existing zoning is residential low, which isn't consistent with the general plan designation. And another historical point of interest is the homes in this subdivision were all previously part of this remaining parcel. The property owner that owned this deeded the larger piece away to a developer that changed the zone from residential low to residential medium and built these subdivision-style homes. Also, to the west, it's also zoned residential low, but again, there's a inconsistent use with the, the church and what's currently called the Samaritan Center. And as I mentioned, there's three parcels. One is defined for this twelve-foot flag strip that goes out to Royal Avenue. The second parcel described in the deed is the larger balance of the property, and another piece is this small triangular section between the larger parcel and Naples Court, which was called Parcel A on Track Map 2725. And so the zoning maps aren't that detailed, but I would venture to say that since this triangular piece is within the boundaries of this track map, it likely is zoned residential medium already. And here are the, the legal descriptions for the, the three parcels. The first is Parcel A and Parcel B that was recorded in document number 26921, Book 2321, page 458, and it recorded on May 14th, 1963. And then this Lot A, which is defined in the title report as Parcel C, was created by Track Map Number 2725 and was created when it was recorded on February 2nd, 1978. And so for details, you can see this is a page from the recorded Trap Map 2725. As you can see here, Parcel A is this triangular porch here, which my client had acquired from the previous property owner that took title to it from the original developer. And also, the rectangular twelve-foot wide strip is identified as a separate parcel by the dash line here. To the west is the Samaritan Center, and again, here is the record of survey that was filed for that property, and again, designating the two separate parcels, the twelve-foot strip as Parcel B, the main part which the house sits on as Parcel A. This is a sheet from the tentative map that shows the existing property in its current state, along with the surrounding topography and existing structures within a hundred feet. This is the twelve-foot wide strip that fronts on Royal Avenue, and there were some questions about whether there was the ability for access there, and as you can see, there's a row of power poles within this twelve-foot strip, along with guy wires and landscaping that would preclude any use of that strip for access. This sheet from the tentative parcel map shows the lot configuration for Parcel One, Parcel Two, and Parcel Three. The dash lines represent the building pad area for future homes. This next slide shows some statistics in that, in order to design a lot layout that was as compatible with the existing surrounding subdivision, we tried to create equally-sized lots, and so you can see the, the very small diversity between the lots. Parcel One is thirty-four percent of the area, Parcel Two, thirty-two percent of the area, and Parcel Three making up thirty-four percent of the area. The building pads, again, Parcel One is a little over forty-eight-hundred square feet, Parcel Two, almost fifty-nine-hundred square feet, and Parcel Three, a little over fifty-nine-hundred square feet. With respect to the geometry of the parcels, and that was one of the, the critical design factors, was the lot width in the residential medium zone. And so the width of Parcel One is ninety-five feet, and that was done in order to accommodate the twenty-foot-wide fire access, vehicle access, and utilities. And it's with the depth ratio is one-point-two to one. Parcel Two, a little narrower than One, a little over eighty-five feet, a hundred-and-twenty-two in depth with a ratio of one-point-one-four to one. And Parcel Three, due to its irregular shape, the ratio is based on the maximum parcel depth and width, not including the flag strip, so its width is seventy feet. The depth is a little under a hundred-and-sixty, and its ratio is two-point-two-six to one. The property has already been surveyed and monumented, and a corner record verifying that boundary survey done by myself was approved by the county surveyor back in April of 2021. With that, that concludes my presentation. I thank you very much for your consideration, and I'm available for any questions.
Yes, excuse me, please stay with us, and we might have some questions for you. And Councilmember Levanos, you're, you're up.
I'm sorry, I don't have any questions. I forgot to unplug, undo that button.
Okay, no problem. Councilmember Litzner.
Thank you for your presentation and explanation. You mentioned that you're here on behalf of Robin Salami, the property owner. Is he, or is this owner currently living in that home that is there on that property?
No, the, the home is currently a rental home, but he's, he's with us this evening on Zoom, and if you have some specific questions for him, he can be available.
And I guess my question, why was, if the intention is to build three homes, I'm curious why there wasn't a, or is it not standard to have a development, a plot map or something to come with this request? Is that, is that unusual, or is that normal?
For.
Is that a question to me or staff?
Does, does he already have designs made? I guess is a question, ready, if we were to approve this, does he have designs ready to immediately submit to staff and to go forward with his, with building or what? I, I guess I'm trying to understand the intentions.
Well, the, he purchased the property, it was an investment property. His plans are to build on one of the lots and sell the other two. So he hasn't designed, he hasn't retained any architect to design any custom home plans for the lot he chooses to retain if your council approves the, the project tonight.
Gotcha, okay, thank you for that understanding, appreciate it.
I, I do want to note, now that that's been volunteered, that there is a renter on the property, that according to SB nine, you can't demolish the property and subdivide it through SB nine for three years if it's been rented. So there would be a preclusion in doing, I'm assuming, or perhaps David, our expert, can weigh in, but if it is currently being rented, then you wouldn't be able to demolish the property on there and subdivide it through SB nine for a period of three years.
You're correct.
However, if SB nine's not implemented until a future date, two weeks, so that would be the applicant's issue to, you know, find out if he can just give notice or.
He would have to, because as of the first, thirty-day notice is the first notice, so he'd still be there after the first.
Yeah, so that, that could be a problem for him, but.
Well, if I can, if I can try and respond is, if, if your council chooses to approve the, the project tonight, I would still have to go through and satisfy all of the conditions of approval, process a, a parcel map, that, that takes time, so it may well be twelve to eighteen to twenty-four months to record the parcel map. So the, as I understand, the conditions of approval that staff has recommended to you tonight is the structure is to be demolished prior to the parcel map recording.
Yeah, but that doesn't answer the question, I don't think. But that's not our question.
I think we've already covered that, and I'd like to move on.
Yeah, okay, I agree.
Mayor, may I make a motion?
I think we'd better go to the public first.
Oh, yes, yes.
Is there anyone in the City Council chambers wishing to be heard on this matter?
We do have one speaker card.
And do we have any Zoom people?
Yes, we do have one speaker card.
Okay.
Joe Pachowski?
Ashburn members of the City Council. If I recall correctly, this council's on record as having sent a letter to our State Assemblywoman Suzette Valideris opposing SB nine. SB nine passed anyway. Now, that means that the only way that this council can prevent an SB nine expansion to four, to, to four residential dwellings on a, on a, on a particular parcel is by leaving the parcel alone. And so what you're looking at potentially is taking a lot where you can have one building right now that could be expanded to four under SB nine, and going to three parcels where you could end up with twelve, a potential twelve dwelling units instead of just the four. Do you really, you know, if you're really, if you're really serious about having opposed SB nine in the first place, why would you even consider approving, approving a parcel split that can, that can turn around and end, end up with twelve dwelling units instead of, instead of just three? That's what this, that's what tonight's proposal does. With all due respect to the applicant, I respect the fact that this project was started in development three years ago. But the rules of the game have been changed, not by anyone up here, not by the developer, but by our state legislature. The state legislature has changed the rules of the game in the middle of his project. And as a result, the property owner can sell the other two parcels, and all three owners could now turn around and, and build four, four dwelling units on each of their properties. That's the fact. So SB nine is an important consideration as you, as you decide what you want to do on this project tonight. I've spoken with residents of the area, and there was a concern expressed that because these lots are being sold off for, for custom homes, that those potential custom homes may not fit in the character of the neighborhood, because they don't have to come back for reapproval to okay the homes that are being built there either. So you've got two reasons to reject this, to reject this project tonight. The first is to take a stance that you've already taken, a strong one against SB nine, and preventing twelve units from potentially being built on this one lot. And two, to make sure that what does get built on this lot is in character with the rest of the neighborhood. There should be a home there, absolutely, but it should be in the, in the character with the rest of the neighborhood. And that's all I've got tonight, thank you.
Thank you, is there any others?
Kristen, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Lucy, I have two, two people who have, three people who have hands up, I'll take care of it, yeah. Heather, I'm going to promote you to a panelist, it might, you might have a slight delay, I will, just one thing, the owner wants to speak, the owner of the property has his hand up, can I go with him first? Yeah. Robin, I've unmuted, I've unmuted you, you can speak now.
Hi, my name is Robin Salami, and I'm an owner, I'm the owner of the property. I'm not a big developer. I, I'm the sole owner of my corporation. The property is in the name of the corporation for tax purposes. I don't intend to sell shares or do anything like that. I'm really not understanding why there's so much disagreement with allowing me to do this. If I wanted to divide properties into four pieces, I could buy the house across the street or any house on the block and divide it into four pieces under this new rule, from what I understand. In order to stop this, the gentleman previously, you know, I understand his emotional connection, you would have to stop every subdivision in, in the city to stop people from, you know, trying to implement whatever it is that the state is trying to pass. My intent is just to upgrade the neighborhood. Right now, there's an old, old house. It's kind of a, it's, it's a dent on the, on the, on the neighborhood. So I, I'm, I understand everybody's worried that, and I noticed that someone said something about apartment buildings, that you can't build apartment buildings, this is in zone for that. Anyone buying one of these lots? Obviously, they could do anything anyone else in the neighborhood could do. There's, under this new law, from what I understand. under this new law, from what I understand. So I don't intend, I intend to build a single family residence there for my son and sell off the other two lots in order to pay for it. And I hope that the city council approves it. It's the only way really to get this property to conform with the rest of the neighborhood. Otherwise, it doesn't pay to put us one house there and replace the existing house. Anyway, I don't, that's all I have to say, I don't know what else to say to you guys.
No, we, we appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, I have two people on Zoom, Heather, I am going to promote you right now, there will be a slight delay and once you're on as a panelist, please start speaking.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I live on Naples Court, directly across the street from this house. The neighbors are not opposed to the lots being split into three units, but they only want one house on each parcel. When they keep on saying they want to put up to four houses on each parcel, that's a lot of cars that are going to be on this street. It's a small cul-de-sac, trying to make a left-hand turn off of the street in the morning is a nightmare. And if you're having four houses on each parcel, it, it's just going to be bad for the neighborhood. Parking is bad enough right now. The house across the street is a rental and there's up to fourteen to fifteen cars out there every single day, parked on the street, in the driveway, and the house never used to look as bad as it looks right now. There's just trash everywhere, they throw trash all in the front yard, they've had, where they've had their septic, their pipes coming out and there's been fecal matter coming out in the front yard, we've had a call. It's disgusting across the street because nobody takes care of that house. And if they could split it into three parcels and have only three single family homes, single story, it wouldn't be bad, but when they're talking about the four houses on each parcel, that's way too many houses on this little tiny street. And any of you people should come drive down the street, come by seven thirty in the morning, five o'clock in the afternoon, and you try and make a left-hand turn off the street with everybody trying to get off the street, it's a nightmare. That's my biggest concern, is you're going to have way too many people, there's already way too many people across the street right now in that house. There's probably about fifteen people living in a five-bedroom house. That's my biggest concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Tracy, I am going to promote you right now, once the, once you're on as a panelist, please unmute and speak.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and the rest of the council and the audience and whomever else is here. As the previous person, this previous speaker said, I too live on Naples Court, I too am subjected to the ridiculousness that Mr. Salami has allowed to grow across the street for the last ten-plus years. Do I trust him to build one house with an ADU? No. Do I trust him to do what he's saying? No. So that is my input as to why I do not wish for this lot to be subdivided, because he is not a trustworthy property owner. I invite all of you to come down our street at six o'clock on any day, six PM, and see the ridiculousness that is happening across the street. Beer cans, sewage, whatever, you name it, roosters, just parking off pavement, all the things that Simi Valley doesn't allow are happening over there right now. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
If there is anybody else who wishes to speak on this item on Zoom, please raise your hand. That's it.
Okay, could, could Mr. Salani come back on?
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, I, I've just got a quick question for you, I, I didn't hear anybody saying there's an intention to build four houses per lot. And correct me if I'm wrong, I, I think you indicated that you're going to build one house per lot.
Yes. Well, I'm not going to, I'm going to build one house for my son on one of the lots and set, my intent is to sell out the other two lots so that we can build a house, so that we have the funds to build the house for my son.
Okay, then some other builder would most likely build the house.
Right, or whoever, you know, an owner builder or, you know, someone else who is, who can put a single family or whatever they're going to put on it. From what I understand, SB nine requires that you be owner occupied to do anything in addition, including an ADU. I suppose that my son could later add an ADU. Although I'd be the owner of the property, so I don't know if that would work.
Yeah.
Again, again, anyone can buy any house on this street that comes up for sale and do whatever it is that I would be allowed to do or that the, the, the neighbors are worried about. This house is, was the original house for that, that area, that was the original ranch house. It is, it is old, it needs to be torn down. The type of tenants that can live there are not high-quality tenants. They're low-quality tenants, because that's the only kind of people that would live in a house like that. But it just doesn't pay to tear it down and build a single-family residence there. The highest and best use of this property is three lots and, and custom homes on them. And I've wanted to do that for a long time. I started this a long time ago and my developer passed away, right at the, right when we were about to be approved. And we had to start all over again because he lost his computer, he lost his computer data. And we started all over again to do it again and here we are, and suddenly there's this SB nine confusion and I'm caught in the middle of it. What I'm going to do is good for the neighborhood. There's, I can't do anything about that old house the way it is. It's just not financially feasible to do anything better than what's there as it is. So.
Okay, yeah, I, again, appreciate your comments.
And by the way, there is no raw sewage coming out of that house, there's, you know, I can't watch the tenants constantly. And I wish there were better tenants there. I like that neighborhood, I met some of the neighbors. And I, I hope to do something nice there for them.
Okay, thank you very much.
I just want to ask Mr. Salami a question, when, if it's appropriate. Which of the three lots did you intend to be the one that you would build on for your son?
Probably the one, one of the ones on the, on the street, but I was going to put them up for sale and my first, I, I have two ideas, one is to pick the lot, allow my son to pick out the lot he wants, or put all three up for sale and see which ones we get the right amount of money for so that we can develop the third one. This has been a, you know, a long-term struggle for me, it's been five years, six years, and we've done this twice now. And to be honest with you, I, I haven't really decided, I haven't chosen one, I, I'm just hoping to get this done and move on from here.
Okay, council member Lou Evans.
Yeah, I'm waiting for the last public comment.
You want me to leave?
Better hang on if you don't mind.
Okay.
Rebecca Alberon?
Hi, yes, thank you. Yes, good evening, my name is Rebecca Alberon and I just wanted to make sure that I understood what was being asked of, from what's coming up here before. And, and that really was that there is a zoning change that is being requested in order to match the general plan or the land use that we currently have, so that's one of the requests. And the other request is to split the lots. Is there a picture of the neighborhood in the, the current square footage in the presentation?
There, there was, I believe there was an aerial shot and.
Can it be brought up really quick?
There you go, is that what you're?
Yes, that's exactly it, thank you. So the reason why I wanted to bring it up, I spoke at the planning commission meeting that they had, and this was something that was brought up by the planning commissioners, and it was about, you know, making the lots comparable to the other lots that are already there. So I think that, you know, in requesting the lots to be split, I think it's reasonable, it's a reasonable request that this applicant is making, and if it's approved, I think it maintains the character of the neighborhood, because currently we have, you know, thirty-plus square footage, there's one that's twenty, but most of them, you know, from eight to twelve around there, so I think it's reasonable that he's asking for the lots to be split and they match what the current neighborhood looks like. Yes, SB nine, I think, is a concern, but there's a lot of, you know, he's going to do this and he's going to do that, but that's not what he's requesting right now, that's not what's coming up before the council. And there's a lot of wishful thinking about, you know, a lot more housing that's being built, and while that's great, that's not what he's currently saying, you know, that there's going to be that much more housing there, and I, I do think it's a valid concern when we talk about traffic and all of that, but, you know, the, the planning commission and the council really hasn't addressed traffic at all, it comes up a lot, but, you know, there really isn't a concerted effort to really address traffic issues, you know, they're really just used as something to stop development from happening. So I just wanted to make sure, you know, that I went back to the request, which was to update the, the zoning, that's what he's requesting, and then to split the lots, and for me, you know, it's, it'll match what the current general plan already is, changing the zoning, and then the lot splits matches what is currently in that neighborhood, more or less, because there is one that's, you know, twenty, and then his is currently thirty square footage, so thirty thousand, and that's it, thank you.
So you indicated we didn't, the traffic report doesn't come at this time, does it? That, that would come when you have buildings going up.
The traffic.
If then, if then, that's kind of.
Well, the traffic was assessed, because the use, the use of single-family residences and it is not found to be significant.
Yeah, so that's not a factor, traffic really isn't, if I'm reading it correctly.
Correct, it's.
Okay, thank you.
Found not to be significant.
So I don't, I don't know where that came from. Okay, council member Littler.
I'm sorry, but we have one other person who just raised their hand.
Okay, let's hold off and let.
No, and that was, that was old, that wasn't current.
What?
That was, I forgot to undo my thing.
Oh, okay, fine.
We have one person who raised their hand on Zoom. Cassandra, I'm promoting you to a panelist, please unmute when you're on there.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to echo what Rebecca said, with the zoning, the applicant being allowed to add to the property to make it comparable to his neighbors. I just wanted to echo everything she said, she took, she'd said it perfectly, but that's it, thank you.
Okay, is there any more on Zoom?
Going to ask one last time, is there anybody else who has not spoken who would wish to speak? Please raise your hand. There is one other person, Catherine Henderson. Catherine, you can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I also live on Naples Court, directly across the street from this house, and yes, I would love to see three individual houses put on those lots. I don't want to see that somebody can come in and say, oh yeah, I can put four houses on this lot, because I don't care what the people that don't live here say, if you are trying to get out of this street, the traffic is terrible. It may not mean anything to any of you guys, but as a resident of this street, I have dealt with trying to get out, that it is so dangerous, sometimes you can't make a left-hand turn, you have to make a right, go up the street, make a U-turn, U-turn and go the other direction, otherwise you can't get out. It is very important to me that, yes, we have a nice-looking house across the street, because I have dealt with this for years, looking at the trash, and he, the owner says there is no sewer, there has been sewer issues where I've had to call the city, because it would be pouring out and you're walking down the sidewalk and it was terrible. That he's never come to my house, and I live directly across the street from his property, and nobody else from the city or planning commission has been to any of my neighbors and asked us any of our opinion, and that, like I say, if you come down the neighborhood, you'll see, we're a very small, tight-knit neighborhood and we all talk to one another and nobody's bothered to talk to us about this in person. And as far as I know, the neighbors have already been told, according to them, that they have so much time that they have to move and they are moving. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close, is that the last?
Yeah, actually, Mayor, before you close the public testimony, I want to make sure that the applicant has one last chance to rebut the most recent comments. The applicant, before you close the public session, give the applicant one last chance to rebut the most recent comments.
So if you would like to respond to any of the comments, you're welcome to.
If he wants.
I can just say that I've talked to the neighbors on each side of me and the church and, and had discussions with them about upgrading the property. I did not talk to anyone across the street, at one point I went and knocked on everyone's door on the block, this is about three years ago, and left notes on, for everyone, and no one really contacted me back, because at that time I was going to divide it into four pieces. That's what my, my, the developer thought we should do, but I didn't, I didn't think that was feasible and we decided to do three. My son is going to live there, I don't want him to, I don't want him to have bad traffic, I don't want to create anything that's difficult for anyone. There was a sewage, there, there was an old sewer leak and we repaired it immediately. The woman was right, there was sewage coming out of the front of the house when the, the old sewer conduit broke and we had it repaired. It's, it's not a recurring problem, it happened once, I remember it years ago, about two, three years ago. That's all.
Okay, thank you, at this point we'll close the public hearing part, and I just want to give the, if staff has anything they want to say, rebuttal.
The applicant's representative has his hand up, I don't know if that counts as, the applicant's representative has his hand up? Okay.
Okay. All right, so at this time, council member Lou Evans, we'll start with your comments.
I, I would like to make a motion, I think this is something that's within the character of the.
I would like to make a motion. I think this is something that's within the character of the general plan, and I think, you know, SB nine doesn't come into play because it impacts every other neighbor on the street in the same way. He's stated various times that his intent is to build three homes there, including one for his own son. I think someone who wants to do that has the best of intentions in maintaining the character of the neighborhood. And if there are, after everyone else's comments, I'd like to make a motion, Mayor, if I may.
Okay. Any other comments?
I, whoever wants to go first.
What?
I do have a comment, but I don't, whoever you would like to go first.
I'm giving you the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Mary. I'm conflicted because I am well aware that the neighborhood council voted five-two against this, and the one person's attendance voted against it as well. And I think that the concern is the unknown. I'm conflicted because as you look at the map, certainly, without SB nine, it absolutely makes sense to make this a moderate-density part of, in that neighborhood. I could see the rationale to make it coalesce with the general plan and change the zoning. And so actually, I'm not quite sure how I'm gonna vote right at the moment, but I'm just seeing that there is, that this SB nine certainly changes potential for the future. But I appreciate knowing the applicant's plans and intentions. And so I think, if I'm understanding correctly, if we were to approve this tonight, everything changes basically January 1st, if I'm not mistaken. What he could do, okay. So that's, those are my comments.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of it was a little bit conflicting. I can understand that. But we're, we're being asked right now to look at a zoning change and a lot split. I don't know that we can use SB nine as an excuse to say no, because number one, SB nine's not in effect right now. And we don't know that he's going to use SB nine for any type of activity on these properties. Personally, my hope is the referendum to have SB nine adjusted or amended or something goes through, which would also alleviate any of these, or any of these concerns. I do think from what some of the neighbors said, demolishing the existing structure seems to be a consensus amongst everybody. And dividing the lots into the same size as the neighborhood also seems to make a lot of sense. Why it was R.L. at some point, way back when, we don't know, but when everything else went to residential medium, it probably should have. I also don't like the, yes, I am concerned that somebody could then lot-split and lot-split. But again, there's some occupancy requirements in there. And on our next public hearing, we're going to be addressing a lot of issues that will help mitigate some of the concerns in regards to how many buildings can be built and what setbacks and all that type of stuff. So in my opinion, I think we're going to need to approve the request.
Okay. Elaine, are you up there on my screen, but I...
I don't know why. Sorry.
Okay, good.
Apologize.
No, that's all right. Maybe I didn't take you off. Okay, my comments, I'll just say ditto to what Mayor Pro Tim Kavanaugh said. I don't think we should be looking into the future that we don't know. We don't have crystal ball in front of us, and we're not sure what's gonna happen with Senate Bill nine. And the man owns the property. He wants to sell pieces of it. And I just think it's out of place to take that individual right away on a maybe things are gonna change drastically. So that's, that's my comments. Now, I think, Ruth, you want to make a motion?
May I, Mayor? I move to adopt Resolution Number 2021-51, approving tentative parcel map TP-S-689, adopting the project's negative declaration, and introduce ordinance Number 1330, approving zone change Number Z-S-2021-003.
Second. Motion, second call for the vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Mr. Salome, we're done with you. Thank you.
Next item. Next item, Agenda Item 4C, an urgency ordinance to establish objective design standards for developing two-unit residential developments and establish rules and regulations for subdividing single-family residential properties in response to State Senate Bill nine, SB nine, a declaration of urgency thereof, and a determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. The reading of the ordinance is as follows. Urgency Ordinance Number 1331, and Urgency Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley, to establish objective design standards for developing two-unit residential developments and establish rules and regulations for subdividing single-family residential properties in response to State Senate Bill nine, declaring the urgency thereof, and making a determination that the ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Sean Gibson, Elizabeth Richardson, and Claudia Pedrosa will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, members of the City Council. This item is in response to Senate Bill nine, signed by the governor last September, which requires ministerial approval of two-unit developments and urban lot splits for single-family parcels. In an effort to maintain some of the local control and prevent immediate undesired consequences, we are presenting a proposed urgency ordinance for adoption tonight to create objective development standards and in an attempt to maintain some neighborhood characteristics to minimize these potential impacts. This was presented to the Planning Commission last Wednesday for comment, and it's really our first attempt at interim standards. As we further study the issue, staff and the Planning Commission hope to better refine these standards for your consideration over the next year. Associate Planner Elizabeth Richardson will now provide the presentation once we confirm the screen is shared.
Can everybody see my PowerPoint presentation on their screen?
I'll take that as a yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, everybody.
I don't know about the rest of you, these masks make it so difficult to understand what people are saying. So apologize when we get lost in the mask fog.
Okay, good evening. Tonight, we will be presenting a city-initiated urgency ordinance to establish objective designs, objective zoning design and subdivision standards in response to the new state law SB nine. As a reminder, SB nine is a new housing law that promotes small-scale neighborhood residential development by creating a streamlined process for homeowners to create duplexes or subdivide their existing single-family zone property. Development using SB nine is ministerial and will not require a public hearing. Staff previously made a presentation to the Planning Commission on October 6th and City Council on October 25th, providing an overview of the new state housing laws, including SB nine, which was signed into law on September 16th, 2021. City Council directed staff to prepare an ordinance amendment to establish objective zoning design and subdivision standards for SB nine development. The draft ordinance was heard by the Planning Commission at its December 15th hearing. The Planning Commission provided comments and corrections to the ordinance and requested the draft ordinance returned at a date uncertain for further review and discussion. In the supplemental packet distributed for tonight's meeting are the proposed edits from Planning Commission. In addition, the Planning Commission has asked staff to return with an explanation of the difference between SB nine and ADU laws. And finally, they have asked for further discussion of the proposed off-street parking requirements. For a property to be eligible for development using SB nine, they must be located in an urbanized area in a single-family zone outside a wildlife habitat area. Allowed zones for SB nine development are the open space, residential estate, residential very low, residential low, residential medium, and residential planned development zones. If a property is located in the very, very high fire hazard zone, flood zone, or alquiesce preolo fault zone, they must be designed to mitigate the effects of their hazards, such as meeting the fire code or determining a buildable area on the site. This exhibit shows the areas of the city where development could be impacted or restricted. The white-stripe line running along the northern edge of the city is the alquiesce preolo fault zone. The purple are the zones where residential is not permitted. The blue is the 100-year floodplain. Red is the very high fire hazard area, and the green are the wildlife corridors. The orange-stripped area that we see on the map are the portions of the city where SB nine development could be allowed. And special hazard areas are eligible for SB nine development, but they must meet a higher standard for safety and be reviewed by the Directors of Public Works and Environmental Services. Additionally, an eligible property for development using SB nine cannot be an income-restricted affordable unit that has been rented in the last three years. And only 25% of the exterior structure may be demolished in order to accommodate development. Two new terms were created for the urgency ordinance. The first term is a two-unit residential development, which is defined as a development with no more than two residential units located on a single lot in a single-family residential zone. The residential units may be located in a single building that contains two primary residential units, also known as a duplex, or in two detached buildings. A two-unit residential tentative parcel map is also called an urban lot split in the new SB nine law, and the two terms are used interchangeably in the ordinance. A two-unit residential tentative parcel map creates no more than two parcels from an existing conforming parcel in a, in a single-family residential zone. Using the provisions of the two residential development, a lot could be, could be developed in one of four ways. A property developed with one single-family residence could add one SB nine unit plus an ADU and a J-ADU. Access to the new SB nine unit would be a walking path to the unit's front door, and parking would be in an enclosed garage. In this scenario, the property is not eligible for an urban lot split. A property developed with one single-family residence could add one SB nine unit plus two ADUs. The two ADUs are possible in this scenario, because with the addition of one SB nine unit, the property becomes a multifamily development and is eligible for two ADUs under state law. Access to the SB nine unit would be from a walking path to the unit's front door, and parking would be in an enclosed garage. In this scenario, the property is not eligible for an urban lot split. A property developed with one single-family residence, an ADU and/or a J-ADU, could add one SB nine unit. Access to the SB nine unit would be from a walking path to the unit's front door, and parking would be in an enclosed garage space. In this scenario, the property is not eligible for an urban lot split. A property developed with one single-family residence can split the lot in half and add one SB nine unit to the lot with the main residence. Plus, they can add two SB nine units in the newly-created lot. No additional units, including an ADU or J-ADU, may be added to either property. Parking would be provided in an enclosed garage, located on the individual lots, and access to the rear property would be from a new driveway. Unlike ADU laws, SB nine allows cities to require enclosed garage parking. And garage parking may be in individual garages, shared side-by-side garages, or shared tandem garages. The new Senate bill gives cities specific requirements for two-unit residential development, but also gives cities flexibility to implement their own objective design standards, as long as they don't restrict two 800-square-foot units from being constructed on the property. The state requires the rear and side yard setbacks be a four-foot maximum, and the state also restricts cities from requiring more than one parking space per unit unless the property is located within a half-mile of a high-quality transit corridor, where no parking could be required. In Simi Valley, the high-quality transit corridor would be the train station. The building official may deny, may deny SB nine development based on evidence that the development would have a specific adverse impact on public health and safety or physical environment in which there is no feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid the impact. And rental units must be for a term longer than 30 days. And if the property is divided using SB nine, the property owner is required to live in a unit as a primary residence for a minimum of three years. The city's current transportation system does not meet the state's definition of a high-quality transit system, except for the train station. This exhibit shows the half-mile buffer around the train station, which is, the train station is outlined here in red. And then this dashed red line is the, is the half-mile buffer. And then in red are the affected properties. And on these properties that are shown in red, these properties are not required to provide the one parking space. While SB nine regulates many development standards for the addition of new units and subdividing lots, it also gives cities the ability to adopt objective design standards to guide development on eligible properties. Objective design standards incorporated into the ordinance include unit sizes, building height, and building separation, open space, and landscaping, and parking. The SB nine law allows cities to implement objective development, design, and subdivision standards. In the proposed urgency ordinance, staff proposes objective development standards, which would allow larger units requiring closed parking, development to follow the city's landscape and tree-removal standards, and define allowed site access, maximum building height, and building separation. City Council has the discretion to recommend modifications to these objective design standards as part of tonight's motion. The objective design standards contained in the urgency ordinance include the following standards. Maximum unit sizes are established by the size of the lot. This means that larger lots can have larger units. Lots up to 5,000 square feet may have a maximum of an 800-square-foot unit. Lots between 5,000 and 8,000 square feet could have a 1,000-square-foot unit. And lots over 8,000 square feet could have a unit up to 1,200 square feet in size. Building setbacks for the front and street-side yards is determined by the individual zone requirements. Rear yard and side yard setbacks for an SB nine unit that's one-story, maximum of 18 feet tall, is four feet. Units that are proposed over 18 feet in height, up to a maximum of 30 feet or two stories, and have a maximum, would have a maximum side yard setback of 10 feet. Two-unit residential units may be two stories with an increased rear and side yard setback to meet minimum building separation. Buildings that are only single-story are separated by a 10-foot minimum, while two-story buildings are separated by a 20-foot minimum. Parking is required to be in an enclosed garage with a minimum of one parking space per unit. Two residential unit developments are permitted to have tandem parking to meet the minimum parking requirement. Subdivision of SB nine eligible properties is by a ministerial tentative parcel map that does not require a public hearing. A total of two lots may be created, and a minimum lot size of 1,200 square feet is required. The lot split ratio must also be a minimum of a 40%, 60% split. To be eligible for an urban lot split, the original lot can have a maximum of two dwelling units. This would result in each lot having two units for a maximum of four units total. Finally, the urban lot split can only happen once, and the owner cannot split adjacent properties. As shown here, lots may be split in many configurations. The lot may be split vertically or horizontally, shown here, or it can be a flag lot. If a lot is split, the minimum lot size must be at least a 40%, 60% lot ratio. Filing for a two-unit development lot split is similar to other tentative parcel maps. However, processing is different, in that maps for urban lot splits are approved ministerially. Conditions for dedication of right-of-way or construction of off-site improvements are not allowed. Moving forward, staff will return to the City Council on January 24th to extend the urgency ordinance to December of 2022. During that time extension, staff will refine the proposed ordinance and return to the Planning Commission to further discuss the ordinance. And the ordinance will ultimately return to the City Council at a date uncertain for final approval. And staff recommends that the City Council approve the ordinance as presented. And staff recommends that the City Council approve the ordinance as presented. And that concludes staff presentation, and we're available to answer any questions.
Wow, that's a lot of work there. And what I was reading and following along with you, the first thing I thought is, any chance we can get a hard copy of that so we could enjoy reading it? And I'm serious, but that'd be nice to have because I think we're going to get so many questions, and if we can field some of them, that'd be great.
We might be able to carve out this presentation and put it on our website.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll work on that.
Okay. And if it's a big deal, no, don't do it.
Oh, yeah, and then we can certainly post this presentation on our website as well.
Okay.
And the council meeting is obviously there as well.
Okay, very good. Okay, first comments, Councilmember Lou Evinus.
I had a request, if you could put the map back up of what areas are actually eligible for this. I want to put this on a geography test, just so you know. I think the Geography Nave Committee will be interested in these layers. So I just wanted to point out that the only areas that you could actually build would be the orange areas, and it looks like they're along transit corridors. I mean, they're long, main, or turrell streets, most of these. Is that correct? That's what it looks like to me.
So by the zone, by only the zoning, the areas of the city where SB9 would be eligible are shown here in the orange. However, by meeting building code for fire, properties located in the red high-fire hazard area could potentially be developed if they meet the building code requirements for developing in a very high-fire hazard area. Same with the, if a property is located in the 100-year floodplain that's shown here in blue, if they meet the requirements of the Public Works Director, they could also potentially develop in those areas as well.
But that would be more expensive, right? They would have to fulfill more modifications to the lot to meet those
Right.
the safety requirements of the fire hazards and
Yeah, and that would be the same here for the Alquis Priola Fault Zone. If a property is located here in the fault zone, then there would be additional studies that they would need to pay for preparation and submit those to the city for review to see if they're eligible, if the property is eligible for development. And again, as you said, that's additional monies.
Okay.
I do want to make sure, in talking about the high-fire zone, if you look at the upper area, for instance, the Big Sky, that development was developed with a high-fire zone in mind, where you had a lot of, the eaves are stuck out and everything else, as well as the Wood Ranch area, as well as the far east end of town in the, I forget what it's called now.
Coptown.
Yeah. There are areas of Bridle Path that did not, they were built in the '70s and probably do not comply, but if a homeowner has made changes to their property, got rid of the shake roof, stuck out underneath the eaves, and did what they had to do, then it would comply. So I want to make sure it's understood that although these are identified as high-fire zone areas, a lot of those are eligible to be split through SB9.
So that brings up another question, if I may, Mayor. I don't know what my time limit is, but... So the question is, if a homeowner decides to apprise themselves of SB9 in that high-fire hazard area, and they decide to do ADU, SB9, you know, a combination of all of those or any of those, then they would have to, all the units on the parcel would then have to be compliant with the fire zone. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that would actually improve, right? Some of these older buildings?
It could.
Okay. I'm just bringing that up because I know people always see the negative. I always try to see the silver lining, and that could be a positive in terms of us bringing those fire hazard homes up to code. My other question is for staff, I believe, two questions. One is, you mentioned specific adverse impact that the SB9 can be denied if there's a specific adverse impact, and you were talking really fast, I was trying to keep up. What would that be? What would the specific adverse impact be? What would be the requirements?
If I recall the ordinance correct, if I recall state law correctly, it references a separate state law, so it's very specific in the bill on what those could be. Off the top of my head, I don't know what those are, unfortunately.
But it wouldn't be like parking, or it wouldn't be, you know, they're going to paint three greenhouses, and I hate green, like, that wouldn't meet the requirement, right?
No, no, they're very specific adverse impacts that cannot be mitigated, and the chief building official and the Environmental Services Director would make that determination.
Very high standard.
Okay, and they're very objective standards, is that correct? Yes? Okay, and then my last question is, what is the difference between what the state law requires in SB9 for parking and our ordinance for parking? Is there a difference, and if so, what is it?
So the state law requires one parking, requires that one parking space be provided, but the objective design standards that the state gives the cities to implement allows us to say that that one parking space has to be within a garage.
And I'll come off of that, is that the state allows the city to require no more than one parking space per unit. Cities do not have to provide parking at all. That's their choice up to one.
Okay, so we're being more strict than the state law by requesting a garage, a covered parking space?
Yes, the state law does not say how parking is provided, so it could be uncovered, open, carport.
Did the Planning Commission see a conflict in us having this ordinance requiring a covered garage where we're not requiring a covered garage for the RV ordinance that we just passed? That seems like a conflict to me.
No, the parking requirements for, I'll say it's surplus parking, such as oversized vehicles or extra parking on your property, do not come up at the Planning Commission hearing, although the Planning Commission did direct us to come back to them, defer to look at the parking options for SB9s, whether they could be in a garage, a shared garage, two separate garages, or in a carport or other options. So in the haste to put this ordinance together, this was our first attempt to come up with something that could take effect immediately, and we could further study over the next year if our initial attempt is inadequate or could be adjusted.
So feasibly, you could have a garage, and it could be used by any of the, in some of the scenarios, you had up to four residences, right? The single-family residence, and SB9, and ADU, a junior ADU. So as long as you have one garage with covered parking, then that would suffice?
You would need a one-car garage for both of the two SB9 units, the existing house and the new SB9 unit, and that could be in the same physical garage if so chosen.
Do they have to construct a new garage, or if there's already an existing garage? Is that okay?
The new garage is not in the urgency ordinance. We want it to minimize other unintended consequences of requiring second and third garages in all instances. Someone may choose to build more parking than what we're requiring. There's nothing that's stopping someone from building two two-car garages or additional parking if they have the space for it. But some of these small lots may not warrant having to build a second garage, but the option of sharing that same garage between the two units is one scenario which this urgency ordinance would allow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Lipster.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there a minimum lot size when dividing a single-family residential lot? You mentioned the 40%-60% split, and Page 5 says it would appear that there's no longer a minimum lot size, but there's a maximum residence size that corresponds. Is that accurate?
Right, so state law requires that if you do an SB9 lot split, an urban lot split, each lot has to be a minimum of 1,200 square feet.
Okay, so the minimum is 12?
Right, so minimum's 1,200, but then they go an additional step to say that if you split your lot, one lot has to be a minimum of 60%, and the other lot has to be a minimum of 40%. So you can't do like a 70-30 lot split or
Gotcha. 80-20. Okay, thank you for that understanding. Let me just go back quickly to the questioning about the garaging, and I think that this is, I might add, I think this is an excellent first step in starting things, and I appreciate that you're going to still look at it. So it's one garage spot per unit that would existing, but is my understanding that that would be an SB9 unit, or the house that's used, the SB9 unit? Currently, a junior ADU or an ADU, we cannot require parking for that, or is that?
Correct. State law does not
Just allow us, okay.
Right, within, if you're within a half-mile of a transit, of a bus stop.
Gotcha, okay. What if the CCNRs in this, in whatever single-family residential neighborhood we're talking about, requires a two-car garage for that residential unit? Can that be enforced, or, I mean, do the CCNRs, can they take precedence? Are they thrown out the window? I mean, what happens in that instance?
Sean, do you, I have a response, unless you have something more specific.
Yeah, I'll refer to the city attorney.
Yeah, no, I mean, we've looked into that issue, and at this moment, there's a little bit of a debate as to legislatively whether or not the SB9 is going to trump CCNRs. There's some arguments both ways, and so it's unknown right now.
Okay, okay. One, just a final series of questions about the owner-occupancy requirement. So I understand that the owner-occupant must, it must be occupied from three years of map completion, at least that's what I read. Is that accurate? And they sign an affidavit that they will stay for three years. Did I read that correctly, Page 23? So I'm trying to understand, what does that mean, map completion? Is that once the lot split is made? And then secondly, I want to know, how do we verify this? And is that something that is a new responsibility of our planning department?
Typically, it's something like a notarized affidavit or some legal document that could get recorded on a property or at least submitted to the city to ensure that the property owner lives there for that three-year period, and I think
So does it mean they have to live there three years before you can build something else? Or that they promise they're going to live there for three years, so it's okay to go ahead and do this?
I don't know if I can completely answer that question. We are still learning some of those provisions, but if the house is already there, and you invoke this, the three years kick in. When does it kick in? When the second house is finalized by a certificate of occupancy, perhaps? There's a few things we have to look at there that kind of reiterates the state law that we're just implementing into our code. There's really no change, other than the fact that we did add an objective standard to require owner-occupancy for both a urban lot split subdivision and create an SB9 unit on the same lot. So that's, there's a little nuance to our ordinance. We're going a little bit farther than what the state requires, and I think the city attorney and our consultant on
I was going to ask Mayanna if she had any other further comment in response to that question.
I do, I would love to chime in on that. Sean has characterized it appropriately. I just wanted to clarify, in response to the specific question, that it talks about intending to occupy for a minimum of three years from the date of the approval of the urban lot split, and we would read that to mean three years going forward. So they need to intend to live on one of the parcels created for three years after the lot split is approved.
And do, well, that's, okay, I appreciate that clarification. Do we verify that at any point? We don't know yet.
Well, this, our attorney is the one verifying that, if I understand your question correctly.
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to understand, so they
I think the best we're going to be able to get
Were we talking design standards here, or are we talking administration standards?
That's a good question, Mayor.
I think we're getting
Fair enough, fair enough. Okay, thank you, that's fine.
Okay, any public?
Mr. Mayor, we do have one speaker card. Cheryl Welsh, but I don't see her here. She's no longer here in the building.
And I believe we have two people on, at least two people with their hands raised, and
Yes.
Kristen will go ahead and introduce when they're ready.
Okay, thank you. All right, so at this time, we'll have our Zoom attendees, if you've raised your hand. Right now, I see two. So Dennis Hunter, I'm going to be promoting you back up to a panelist to speak. And please unmute yourself once you're on. Dennis, oh, there you go.
All right, thank you. A couple of questions, and I'm asking these from my background. I oversaw land development in Los Angeles County for about 25 years, and we faced some of the challenges that SB9 is bringing to local agencies. And two of the items that, since they're underground and out of sight, is what is the potential for exceeding the capacities of the local sewer system when you increase the density by a factor of four, being that the sewer was originally sized for the medium-density development that the subdivision was built at? And the other is, I haven't seen any feedback from the fire department, so is the addition of potentially three additional structures on an existing lot going to affect their fire flow requirements compared to what the original water system was built to produce? And in addition, after January 1st, 2011, any of these additional units will be required to have fire sprinklers, and so that places a greater demand on the local water main that's going to be providing service. One of the other agencies I didn't see comment was the fire department with regards to their vehicle access, like, for example, on Mr. Salami's project that I spoke to you early on. There was a lot that was a flag lot, essentially, and the fire department was requiring a 20-foot-wide easement to be able to get to the rear parcel off of Naples Court. Have they provided any feedback as to what their access requirements are going to be with respect to building permits for these SB9 units in the rear of existing single-family
Anybody, boy, you've asked some great questions, and I don't think at this point we're having the fire department look at it to be perfectly honest with you, but I can tell you, especially access, they're very concerned about access, and I would think when it comes to the time where you're going to develop one of those slots, like we talked about on Naples, that's when the fire department will get in and look at the plans and make their recommendations or make their regulations, because, like I say, they're very, very strict on what they ask for. Now, you said something about at a certain date that we're going to have fire sprinklers on all-size buildings.
Yes, the California building code was changed on January 1st, 2011, that all structures built after that date had to have fire sprinklers, and that goes beyond what it was previously with just the very high-fire hazard areas.
Yeah, it, my understanding, it was 5,000 square Yeah, it, my understanding that was 5,000 square feet was the threshold. Then they had to be sprinkled. And you're, what you're saying is that there's going to be a date that it becomes required on all structures. Am I correct?
Yes, I.
Okay.
Without doing further research, my understanding is all single family residences are required to be sprinkled.
Okay, that's, that's a good question that we can.
That is the case. All new houses, in fact, if you have an addition to a house, it potentially can require for the existing house to be upgraded to have sprinklers.
So would that apply to the SB nine structures and the ADUs?
Not sure about the ADUs, but it will definitely be sizable. Actually, we can double check, but pretty much issued everything should have its fire sprinklers.
Yeah, I would think just your in-house fire investigator or prevention officer would be able to come up with that information. But those are good questions.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm get.
Go ahead. Did we lose him? You might have lost.
He's coming back as a panelist. Hold on one second. Okay, and Dennis, can you unmute yourself?
Sure. So I guess what my intent was is to point out that there may be other objective standards that you may want to subsequently adopt after you implement your emergency ordinance, after consulting with the other agencies in Simi Valley that provide services with respect to having fire flow tests, doing sewer capacity tests prior to issuing building permits and objective standards for fire emergency access.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments. And I, I am fully aware that our staff will be looking into those items at the appropriate times. But I, I do thank you for that information.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to, to comment.
Sure.
To, to address Mr. Hunter's concerns, you know, we do have within the ordinance right now that many of these items are subject to the approval of the Director of Environmental Services. And we're going to, in a situation that it could be taxing, you know, we are going to, we can check those items out and make sure that it complies with all the rules. In fact, we did, we do say also that if you can have the urban lot split without, you know, with administrative process as long as you meet certain requirements. And basically you have to meet with, you know, the code requirements and all that. And the state law does, I can't find it right now, but it does address that you have to look at water capacity and utilities. It does mention that. So the director has an opportunity to deny a lot split based on that.
Okay. Yeah, well, thank you. And like I say, I know you folks, we're going to get to the bottom of it. And your suggestions are very good. But we also know that you address those issues when the time comes. Now, the one thing someone said about Fire Zone Four, anyway, that's what it used to be called. Yeah, when you're in the brush area. That'd be interesting to find out if your, if your house is Fire Zone Four, which is box thieves and stucco and what have you. If, if that means that the ADU or SB nine home has to be built to that same standard, my guess is it will.
Especially, I had an opportunity to actually attend one of the fire department's presentations after the fires, the big fires that we had out here, Woolsey Fire and all that. And that's one of the things that they came up about after that. That basically any of the structures that are going to be built in any property that has the high fire hazard areas, it has to meet the same requirements. Because the whole, the way the fireworks is basically, is the amburs that fly that is the issue. And that's why they require for the enclosed eaves, you know, and the stuccos and so on and so forth. So yes, every single, that, that will be definitely looked into.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and then we have two more comments. So Ginger, I'm going to be promoting you to a panelist so you can speak. Okay, and if you can unmute yourself.
Hi, everybody. Merry Christmas. It's getting late. Anyway, I have the opportunity of watching the recording of the City Planning Commission on this item. And so some of those items, I just, they're in the supplemental that's attached to the agenda. I have a couple of three items. I live in the Bridle Path up in Simi Valley. Although what I'm talking about is more specific to our HOA. It isn't only specific to our HOA. So one of the items and questions that one of the commissioners last week requested to be asked was about the parking situation. Because at this point, the question was asked, who is going to enforce the parking of one of the, the units that's added? And the answer was the city doesn't enforce parking. It's only that the parking has to be built. So, and then there were some questions back and forth on that. So that brings up an issue of traffic stress and where all these people are going to park. So I think that's a really big issue on HOAs. The second issue would be lot split. It was brought up in the city commission. I don't know if this has changed subsequent to last week, but it was asked, what about HOAs and CCNRs? I'm sorry, the state bill and the ministerial approval and that going against the CCNRs. So in our CCNRs, you're only allowed one single dwelling unit. There's, we have 20,000 square foot lots is the minimum up here. And then we have several that are larger than that. It was said that that would be an issue between the homeowner and the HOA only. And that because it was ministerial approval, as long as they, and we happen to be in the high fire zone. But as long as whoever it was decided they wanted to implement the building standards for high fire, that it would get approved. So, and that if, basically to say it quickly, if we wanted to sue, and I imagine that meant the city, or the HOA wants to sue the city, that that's the only direction that we would have available to us. So what I'm going to say though is I don't know, I'm presuming that you already know this. Most HOAs are California corporations. So in the Bridle Path HOA, we're a California corporation. We have 630 members. If you could split your lot, then you're adding additional addresses. But our HOA doesn't have the ability to recommend, to have them not be part of our HOA. It really starts to become a bigger issue. That issue is going to become a city's issue because we have to, we'd have to deal with amendments and things like that. And as you're aware, we're already dealing with that. So I just wanted to bring that all to your attention. And to say, I think even in this urgent urgency ordinance, that HOAs could be mentioned. And probably that the city could back up HOAs a little bit better than they're doing by saying we're hands off and this is, we're just going to push it back to the homeowner. So anyway, that's pretty much all I have to say on that.
Thank you.
Kristen, do we have anyone else?
Yes, we do. Carol, I'm going to be promoting you to a panelist so you can speak. Hold one second. And then if you can unmute yourself to speak.
Yes.
That's terrible.
Carol, could you?
Can I be heard?
Okay, now I can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Smartphones are smarter than me sometimes. Two questions, and I can only remember one now, is with the additional load, someone had mentioned sewage and, and fire access, things like that. But are the city leaders also looking into our antiquated electrical grid? I mean, the whole country is, you know, band-aided together on their electrical grid since, you know, the 1940s or whenever it was first installed. So, you know, this additional population growth above and beyond the predicted plan of normal growth is going to put a serious draw on the electrical grid for the city. And yes, I'm concerned about defensible space. If, you know, the building is only four feet, you know, from the, the main house, that definitely is, is too close for comfort if something were to catch on fire. So yes, I would definitely want the, the fire people to review any kind of issues there. Oh, the other question was the three year requirement to live there. Based on the current unemployment situation and, you know, job jumping, how, you know, I can say today, yes, you know, I'll stay here for three years. But if I'm laid off, you know, a month from now, wherever the job takes me, I, I could be, you know, going out of state. So there's got to be a, a, I'm going to call it a back door for that scenario. If, you know, the owner ends up not being able to stay the three years. Those are my questions.
I'll, I'll make a comment on the electrical. With the recent PSPS events in the last few years, two years, whatever it is, we've seen a marked improvement in our electrical system here in the valley. Now, I can't speak for the United States or anywhere else, but our system is improving quite rapidly right here in Simi Valley. Now, for volume, I don't know. But for consistency and new equipment, Edison is actually doing a, a pretty darn good job of replacing old equipment and updating our grids here within the city.
Kristen, any more speakers?
As of right now, no. We are, we are, we are done with our Zoom speakers for this agenda item.
Thank you.
Joe Pachowski?
But I actually came across an article in the Camarillo Acorn that describes what the city of Camarillo is doing to set up their required regulations. And I, I thought that some of those were some pretty good ideas. Let me just kind of quickly go over it. One of the things that they're doing is they're putting a deed restriction that requires the owner to occupy the lot for three years. I know there's been talk amongst the council in the past that according to, I think it's SCAG, that they, that they can't, that the state can't require that. But Camarillo has gone and put, is putting some sort of a deed restriction that requires the owner to occupy the property. They're also putting a minimum size of the, of the SB nine units of 700 feet. They're only allowing single story residences up to 16 feet tall to have them. And they're requiring that all, all units have a kitchen and at least one full bathroom. And so it was just something that I came across while I was, while I was reading during the council meeting tonight. And I thought that some of these were some pretty good ideas as far as what the council can do to set up the necessary requirements as part of the urgency ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no more speakers, Mayor.
No more?
No more.
Okay. Then we'll end the public testimony and move on. And I think Elaine Lister would like to speak.
I actually just wanted to follow up with some of the questions that were raised. And maybe you're going to speak to that by, by testimony. I know that Ginger was concerned about there's maybe having some deference or some teeth to what HOAs currently have. Is there anything that we could, could or should put in this that would give some support to that that you are aware of?
Right now, there's no control the city could do as far as the HOA. It is still between property owners and their HOA under current interpretation of that ordinance. The city stays out of that matter.
Okay. And then just to follow up with Mr. Pachowski's suggestions. I caught four of them that he made. Are any of those worthy of being considered? The deed restriction for three years, he mentioned. Minimum building size of 700 square feet, I think, is what he referenced. I know we have a maximum of 800. Is that correct?
So a deed restriction is one of the options we're looking at. I don't know if it's specifically spelled out, but that's the intent to get some sort of legal documentation for that three year intent. So that's something administratively we're looking, looking at.
So that might be a way to do it.
It could be incorporated in a future update to the ordinance. The, as far as the lot size go, we don't include a minimum, but there's a minimum lot size per building code that they must comply with. Smaller is, gives the property owner more flexibility. And the, as we saw earlier in the presentation, we are proposing three different unit sizes based on the size of the lot, which you do have some discretion. But like the presentation said, you cannot preclude up to 800 square feet for both of the two units.
Okay. The other two.
I missed the other two because there was a.
One was height.
Yeah, the other was, yeah, the, what, the all units have a kitchen and a full bath, which I don't think we referenced at all in this urgent, or in this.
To create a primary unit, you must have a kitchen and a bath. So it's kind of a automatic.
Full bath? Does it have to, can it be, does it have to be full?
Have a full bath unit and the heights are indicated.
16 feet is what he said Camarillo is doing. We're at 18 feet?
We're 18 and 30 depending on the setback configuration.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I'm not sure two feet makes.
Councilmember Lou Evans.
I don't want to cut off Councilwoman Lister.
Thank you.
And our contract attorney is back on the Zoom call. If you have any further questions for her.
I just want to, I, I know that there's been a lot of comments about traffic and the impact that this is going to have with traffic. But it seems like we have, A, units that are already being rented out, whether they're condos or townhomes or duplexes or homes. So this might actually alleviate the traffic issue if we have people, you know, in duplexes and triplexes and fourplexes and have people in different living areas. The other thing that I, you know, we can do as a city is build on our public transportation. We can expand our bus services, right? We can expand our bike pathways and make it. We can expand our bus services, right? We can expand our bike pathways and make it more of a walkable city, which makes us more of a desirable location as well, because people are always looking for walkable cities and walkable locations, and it's actually one of the things that makes cities more desirable. So those are some of the things that we can do to address traffic issues as well. Is that correct?
Walkability certainly affects traffic issues and density and sense of community, uh, comes around traffic. So, um, there's a thought out there that promotes, uh, good community.
So I, you know, I'm just trying to address some of the issues that people are bringing up, and I, traffic is always one. Uh, and I know that now, uh, one of the public speakers, Rebecca, brought up, um, the issue of, you know, how you alleviate traffic. And to me, in my mind, that would be providing, you know, more public transportation options or walkable options or, you know, riding your bike or, um, scooter. I see a lot of people on scooters now and skateboards, uh, but those are all options as well that we can consider, including or to improve the traffic issues in the city generally and overall, and with the impact of SB nine. Yes?
That, that is correct. When you create a demand for transfer, for transportation, you add bus lines and more frequent services to that, and usually a higher density in certain areas promote the need for additional transit.
Okay, great. Um, that's the only question I have, but I would like to make a comment before making a motion, mayor, when, if and when possible.
Yes, okay. Um, any other comments or is that it? We're ready for, or I think, uh, Councilmember Judge, you had?
A lot of this was sold to the, uh, Assembly members under the fact that HOAs were exempt. That's how it was sold to them. Um, but if you read the, uh, any of your HOAs, you usually have a thing in there about public policy. And your HOA does not trump public policy. And I'm asking for legal opinion here, since SB nine passed, was signed by the governor and goes into effect on January 1st. Doesn't that make it public policy?
Yeah, that, that is actually one of the counterarguments, that you can't violate public policy. The counterargument is that the legislation, the actual law, did not expressly indicate that HOAs were going to be subject to it. It actually controls and provides local government with some controls. They didn't say anything about HOAs. So that's the counterargument. So we're really truly waiting to see if the California Legislature is going to fix this problem.
Oh, we are. We're gonna be here a while.
We're gonna be here a while. I agree with that.
Okay. Just checking.
Okay, yeah, before you make a motion, um, if in the, being consistent, I don't think, but is there any, uh, expertise communications on this matter? Anybody? Okay, seeing none, that's all. That was just, make sure it's in there. Somebody will say we didn't do it.
Uh, I move to adopt, can I make a motion, mayor? Yes? I move to adopt Urgency Ordinance Number 1331, declare the urgency thereof, waive full reading of the ordinance, and read the urgency ordinance by title only, and determine that the ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Second.
Uh, motion and second, Carol, for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Next item, Agenda Item 4D, a public hearing to consider introduction of an ordinance amending solid waste and recycling regulations to incorporate changes mandated by SB 1383 and adoption of a resolution. The readings are as follows. Resolution Number 2021-52, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley establishing civil fines for violations of the solid waste ordinance number 1332. And ordinance number 1332, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley amending Chapter Three of Title Six of the Simi Valley Municipal Code relating to Regulation of Solid Waste Storage, Collection, Disposal, Transfer, and Resource Recovery. And Joe Deacon and Wes Yates will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. Uh, as was mentioned by the clerk, Wes Yates, uh, with my staff is joining me. He's our solid waste coordinator. Um, tonight, we're here to talk about SB 1383 and the impacts of it and some suggested actions. In 2017, the legislature adopted Senate Bill, or SB 1383, establishing target reductions in organic disposal of 50% by 2020 and 75% by 2025. In addition, SB 1383 requires a minimum of 20% of edible, edible food products be recovered as food for human consumption by 2025 from specific food generators instead of disposal. The California Department of Resource Recycling and Recovery, or CAL Recycle, staff presented an overview of the requirements of SB 1383 on August 9th of this year to your City Council. SB 1383 requires the city to take specific actions, including provide automated organics, organic waste recycling service to commercial multifamily and residential customers, conduct organics recycling centered on education and outreach, procure organic waste recycling products, implement an edible food recovery program, perform capacity planning to cover 15 years of organic waste diversion from landfills, and establish enforcement procedures, including fines for non-compliance. The city's current regulations on solid waste and recycling are found in the municipal code in Article Six, Chapter Three. The mandates under SB 1383 require the city update the municipal code in order to enact enforcement authority for organics waste diversion by January 2022. Formalize automated organic waste recycling and update terminology. Waste management and city staff are currently partnering in a public outreach campaign to inform residents and businesses of these new organic recycling recovery requirements. The period of 2022 through 2023 is scheduled as a time set to inform the public as enforcement is not to be, required to be carried out until 2024. Reporting on organic waste diversion has been in place for many years. However, there are additional reporting requirements under SB 1383 the city and waste management are prepared to fulfill. The city's typical approach to obtain compliance is to educate businesses and residents on required actions and obligations. However, for violations occurring after January 1st, 2024, state law provides that the city shall issue a notice of violation requiring compliance within 60 days. And if after 60 days, compliance has not been reached, the city shall impose penalties. If the ordinance is put into effect, the new mandates, organic waste generators to post proper signs in our waste containers, to properly segregate organics from refuse, and commingled recyclables to maximize organic recovery. Businesses required to recover foods as edible food would also be subject to enforcement for meeting recovery goals. In fact, residential customers would also be subject to enforcement for proper use of the three bins provided to them. Staff proposes the enforcement actions that include financial penalties that meet the minimum requirements of the law. These fines are proposed to be adopted by resolution. They are a 100, or a $50 fine for the first violation, a $100 fine for the second violation, and a $250 fine for the third and subsequent violations. Waste management in collaboration with the city will help to educate residents and businesses on these new organic recycling requirements and issue notices of violation if necessary. City staff will work with the franchise holder to implement an inspection and auditing program to help residential customers maintain compliance. While the provisions of state law require fines, the city and waste management will do all that is possible to avoid any fines being issued to any Simi Valley customers. In addition to automated organic waste recycle, uh, organic waste service requirements, specific businesses such as supermarkets, grocery stores, food distributors, very large restaurants, large hotels, schools, and healthcare facilities must recover edible food as food and report recovery of at least 20%. Staff recommends the City Council introduce ordinance 1332, updating the city's municipal code to comply with SB 1383 and adopt a resolution establishing a schedule of monetary fines for non-compliance. And Wes and I are here to answer your questions.
Okay, um, questions of staff. First, are there any expertise communications? Okay, I, I am going to say that I talked to someone from Waste Management about this is coming, but not in any great detail. Okay, questions?
Okay, there you go. I pressed the button. Paying attention to that. Okay. So are we going, because you said three cans. We're still sticking with the three cans. We're not going past three cans, right, for residents?
Do you know anything on that?
Um, no, we are sticking with the three can system.
Okay, so with this consumable or this, uh, I guess, food waste, uh, going to the compostable can?
Yes, it goes into what, or the green waste can, as many people call it. Yes.
That would, that would require a homeowner to have a separate receptacle in the home to gather that, assuming, or they have to go outside and dump it in the green can directly.
Yes, it would require the resident to segregate organic waste.
Couldn't take a can, put a plastic bag in it, throw your food waste in the plastic bag and put it in the compostable can, right?
Um, no, they don't want.
Did the state provide any funds for this mandate that they're putting out?
As of now, there is going to be a grant tentatively opening up in January that will primarily aid in the education outreach part of this.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Lister.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to follow up on, um, on this third can. It is my understanding that in the past, the green bin was optional, and not all residents have yard clippings, for instance. So basically, as I'm reading this, we are now requiring every residence, every, every residence to have a green can. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Um, and so, and, and then the additional fees attendant to that, they're now going to have to pay.
Uh, so how the, the structure is right now with the, with the rates is that third can is included with that monthly rate. So if you're not currently getting that third can, you're still paying the same rate as somebody who is. That's my understanding.
Okay, but everyone will have to have those three, three cans. Okay.
Yes.
Um, page 10, um, it talked about, or maybe, I don't know, I'm sure my page number. It talked about the, that we are going to be using the blue, that the blue can is, in essence, will no longer be for garbage, but for specifically for recyclables, that that is also part of this mandate. Is that accurate?
So, uh, we, we have non-standard colors for our.
Correct. I, I'm, when I moved here, it took me forever to get that non-standard thing down.
And, and there's been a move by the state to standardize the colors throughout the state. So there's, there, there, yes, we are going to comply with the requirement to standardize the colors as, as everybody else has.
When, when does that become effective and how do we re-educate?
Um, Waste Management is rolling that out, and they are taking the lead on the education part of that campaign. And we can provide more on that to you.
Do you know when it becomes, is it be effective as this is, January 1st? Is that what it's supposed to be?
Yes, so that's when it is effective, but again, the enforcement doesn't take back till 2024. The, the cans themselves, the, the city's going to kind of have a hodgepodge of different systems going. That Waste Management has to kind of organize, so that will be a lot of education and outreach, uh, to get that message clear.
It will. I just think, see, this is going to be messy. Um, okay, thank you. Um, Tier One, um, or Two are now being required to enter into a contract with Food Recovery Services, as I understand, as I read this. Um, so right now, we have volunteer food banks that are at the Mayco and pick up, et cetera, but now it's no longer going to be voluntary. What if there isn't a food recovery service available? Do we have a requirement? I mean, who's required to make that happen?
So ultimately, it'll fall onto the facilities themselves, um, to, to create that. I, I think with this, uh, law now, we're going to see a lot greater expansion of food recovery services. Uh, we, we conducted a survey with a lot of our Tier One generators, and they already have a lot of these partnerships established. Um, so that network is there currently.
Uh, uh, I guess, and we were talking about this before. It, it appears that we'd already meet these mandates, but we aren't keeping track of the data right now. So one of the things that's required under this law is that those businesses that are doing recovery will have to record the data, submit it to us, and we'll have to compile that and submit it to the state. But we're looking good. I, I, I think much of the groundwork is already there. It's just a matter now of getting the data and reporting it.
Okay, good.
But, but we'll sort that out, too. I mean, maybe it'll be a little short, maybe we'll need to do a little more.
Gotcha. And, and I just had one of the, just maybe this is a total change topic. Um, as I read through it, organic textiles or carpets are also supposed to go into this green bin. I mean, does that mean if you rip out your wool carpet, that's supposed to go there as well? And you have to, uh, that's what I read in, in the report. Is that? Is that accurate?
That, that would be a question I'd have to clarify.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have the answer right now.
Fair enough. I was just, I was just curious to see that there. I thought that just, anyway. Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Councilmember Lou Evans.
I have several questions. Thank you, mayor. Uh, the first one is, um, my first thought was people are going to start putting food in the garbage disposal. There's going to be a lot more people that throw their, you know, leftovers or, you know, old, or old food or whatever in the garbage disposal as opposed to throwing it in the trash. Is that good? Is that bad? Is that going to place more of a strain on our sewage system? Are we going to have an educational component to that? Can you answer any of those questions?
I think we're going to have plumbers making some money.
Yeah, I, well, what we're doing does not encourage that, so I don't, I'm not sure.
Well, I'm not saying we're encouraging it. I'm just saying, I can see a lot of people saying, well, if I can't throw the food in the garbage can now, I'm going to put it in the garbage disposal. And what kind of strain, like, are we, is, you said that we're leaving the educational component up to Waste Management?
No, 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 we're partnering with them.
Oh, okay, so we can include, can that be included in our educational?
Sure.
Because I want to make sure people don't just like, oh, we're going to shove everything down the garbage disposal now, because.
I think if you're throwing it in the trash now, if, if you're not willing to participate, you'll continue to throw it into the regular rubbish trash. I think that's probably what will end up happening.
I just, in my mind, I thought, that's the first thing people are going to like, oh, just throw it in the garbage disposal.
Shove it down.
Yeah, and, you know, yes, I know plumbers will make money and that. I guess it'll be good for the plumbers in our city, of which we have many, including a former student of mine. That's a plumbing company here, so, uh, but I was just curious about that. I just want to make sure that's included, so people know you can't just start throwing stuff down the garbage disposal. There's some stuff that can go down there, but there's stuff that should not.
Right.
Um, my second question was, um, can people, will there be a component of using compost bins? Can people use compost bins? Do you think that will increase the use of compost bins? And how does that work in our, in our city, which is a city, but we have a lot of critters in our city? We have bunnies and raccoons and coyotes and skunks and, you know, the whole nine yards. So I know at my school, we have a compost bin, but it's, it's, um, it's a community compost bin, but we have, um, you know, it's, it's netted and, like, critters can't get in there. So is that going to be a component of this program as well?
Um, yes, so in the ordinance, there is a, a specific item that states that nothing about this is excluding personal composting. Um, personal composting is going to be absolutely encouraged. Waste Management, I love that in terms of a diversion standpoint, processing this material. Uh, so yes, absolutely, um, personal composting will be encouraged.
Okay, and, um, Ken, uh, this was a question that, uh, Councilmember Kavanaugh asked, so I'm going to ask it on her behalf. Uh, but it's a great question. Can people use compostable bags for their food scraps? I know that, like, Trader Joe's and Sprouts, like, they have. for their food scraps? I know that, like, Trader Joe's and Sprouts, like, they have compostable bags now. So people want to throw their food scraps in compostable bags and then put it in the green bin. Could they do that or not?
Um, as of now, that, that's not encouraged. It, it's foreseen that it's going to happen. Uh, but those bags, while they are biodegradable and compostable, can cause issues with machinery during the sorting process.
Ah, okay.
Right now, until technology might potentially change in the future with how we handle this material, uh, bags are not encouraged.
Okay, great. And I, I am assuming that the educational component will include, um, multiple languages as well? Spanish, Tagalog, Mandarin, Arabic, other major languages that are spoken in our city? Or at least the documents to be translated into those?
Yes.
Languages?
Yes.
Yes, because as, as a mother who does most of the cooking in my house, I know that, you know, we have a lot of, uh, three-generation households where, you know, the, the grandmother or the mother, whatever, who, you know, speaks Arabic or, you know...
I can't speak how many languages we're going to do. But we, our public outreach is bilingual.
Okay, wonderful.
No.
Wonderful. At, at least a Google Translate button so that, you know, if they needed it, it would be there at the very least. But, um, thank you for, for, for this ordinance. I think it's, um, you know, I, I'm a former science teacher, current teacher, and we know that, you know, so many greenhouse gas emissions, six to eight percent of all human-caused greenhouse gas emissions are caused by food waste. And that, um, if we could, in this country, if we could stop food waste, it would be the equivalent of preventing 32.6 million cars' worth of greenhouse gas emissions. So this is a big, big deal and it is being covered by our students um, in their, you know, environmental science classes. I know because my daughter's in one, so uh, it's a big, big deal for us. And just so you know what the costs are, and I wanted to address this with, uh, councilwoman Lutzer. The cost for, uh, the average household in the United States of America, according to NPR, for climate, um, change is close to $42,000 a year. So we're already paying the costs of climate change that are caused by greenhouse gas emissions as a household every year, $42,000. So the cost of not doing anything, right, is what we're paying right now. So thank you so much for doing this. And Mayor, whenever you're ready, I would love to make a motion.
Yes, go ahead and make. Oh, I'm sorry.
We have no public speaker cards, but I'll check with Kristen on Zoom.
All right, so I was just going to ask our attendees right now, we don't have any hands up, but if anybody would like to speak, now is the time. Um, using your Zoom controls, raise your hand or do star nine if you're on a telephone. All right, I do not think anybody wishes to speak. There are no hands coming up. So we are good.
I was seeing if you brought me some food to eat too. Yeah. We're going to start a little or bring, uh, food trucks in. Yeah, that'll be good. Okay, we're going to close the, uh, hearing at this time, and I'm looking for...
And Mayor, Mayor, before we make the resolution, um, over here. I'm sorry, Mayor.
Oh. Here we go again. I'm looking at Ruth. Listen to her.
I'm the one talking, speaking. Just a quick possible change to the resol, well, not change, maybe addition to the resolution. I understand that we are being required to adopt fines and they have to be levied, levied for noncompliance, and I appreciate that. The state is telling us we have to do that. And, and, and staff has recommended the minimum, and I appreciate that as well. Um, I guess, um, I guess I would like the rev, the resolution to reference that this is a state requirement. Um, my thoughts being that, um, I don't want our, our constituents, um, residents to think that we are arbitrarily saying, hey, you're putting, you're putting your, um, scar, your scraps in the wrong container and so, and we just found that out, and so now you have to pay $50, $100 or whatever it is. I, I guess, I, I know we need to do this. This is important and I, and I support this resolution, but I wondered if we could at least add the words "as required by the state" or some such vocabulary so that it's clear that that's why.
You can do that.
We can have it right out on the title. Resolution City Council, City of Simi Valley, establishing civil fines for the violation of solid waste ordinance number three, 1332, as required by the State of California.
I would like to add that then, if, to the motion when made, if possible.
May I make a motion, Mayor? This is, this is Councilwoman Lovenos. Look right, Mayor, look right.
I was looking at this guy even harder and I'm wanting to know if he's going to share. That was what I was looking at. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm trying to move us along, Mayor. I move to introduce ordinance number 1332, modifying Title 6, Chapter 3 of the Simi Valley Municipal Code and adopt Resolution Number 2021-52 establishing fine limits for noncompliance as established by state law?
Second.
I don't think, we don't need a second.
Oh, sorry. You have one anyway.
Yeah.
Do you need a second vote on? But did you change it? So we don't have to vote on changing the language, just, we just have, just added it?
As amended.
As amended.
We received a first and a second, correct?
Second. Call for the vote? Thank you.
The motion passes unanimously.
See you, Joe.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next item on the agenda is item five, public statements. This is a time for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. All comments submitted by email have already been provided to the city council. However, they will not be read by the city clerk this evening. Speakers will be called in in the order in which a card was submitted, followed by speakers who are assigned onto Zoom to speak for this public statement, item five, for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the city council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record.
Okay, ready for the first speaker?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I have two speaker cards. Mark Re- Reimier? Uh, Root Man? Not here? Kristen, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Yes, actually, Root Man is on, um, is on Zoom and would like to speak. So when you're if you, oh, was anybody in the council chambers to speak though?
We have, no.
Oh, okay, all right. So, um, if, if that's okay, I'll be, um, moving Root, promoting her to a panelist. Hold on one second. And Root, if you could unmute yourself?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
All right, sorry about that confusion. It's, it's a little late. I commend you guys. I had to leave. I was hungry, but, um, um, good evening, or I guess, good night, really, um, Mayor Mashburn and, and members of the city council. I just wanted to say thank you. I wish I could be there in person um, to thank you for appointing me to the CDBG Committee. Um, I look forward to serving the community and bringing the youth voice to public service. Um, I know it's going to be a lot of work, but I'm ready for it. I just wanted to backtrack a little bit because, I mean, I know it happened a, a little bit ago, but I'm, I'm frankly still, um, a little shocked um, and disappointed in the council's inability to do the right thing and vote, vote to appoint councilwoman Ruth Lovenos as mayor pro tem. Um, in my opinion, this is a blatant, an obvious attempt to suppress and disrespect her on the dais. Specifically, I'm surprised by Mayor Mashburn stating that, um, councilmember Mike Judge does what is best for the city and thus would be best for the job, opposed to anybody else on the dais. I fail to see how doxing a young activist is in the best interest of the city, and I fail to see how getting Simi Valley on major news platforms, highlighting Mike Judge's racist behavior, is best for the city. Mayor, in doing this, you looked over two qualified members, councilwoman Lutzer and Lovenos, on the dais, um, and instead you moved to nominate probably the most unqualified person to this position. I'm also disappointed in the fact that the council seems to completely ignore all public comments unless it's convenient for a certain partisan agenda. Um, I believe in denying a neighborhood council member, public comments were a uh, moving factor, and today, seven out of nine people who spoke on Agenda Item Two spoke in favor of Ruth Lovenos for mayor pro tem. Um, in conclusion, I think passing up on councilwoman Ruth Lovenos, once again, is nothing short of an injustice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is 5A. Kristen, I'm sorry, do, do you have anyone else on there?
No, I do not. Wait, well, yeah, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is, uh, item 5A, city council member comments regarding public statements.
Okay, comments. Uh, councilmember Lovenos?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to address the comments of, um, Mr. Lapper earlier. I know we didn't get a chance to respond to that, but uh, I want to let you know that I will, as, at least as an individual council member, continue to encourage every resident to participate in our municipal government as a volunteer, uh, as an employee, as a resident. I, I welcome you to come to city council meetings via Zoom or in person, whatever is available to you, and, uh, to, to continue to participate. Please do not be discouraged, uh, and know that I'm listening and that I pay attention. And I want to thank all, all the residents who, um, saw in me all the things that I do for the city and that I do everything that I do and I volunteer all of my time and energy uh, for the residents of the city and to do what's best for the city. And thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Other comments regarding the comments at, uh, item five? No one? Okay. We'll move on to the consent calendar.
Before you get to consent?
Yes.
I would recommend going back to 1B. And the motion should we extend beyond the meeting?
Oh, okay. Yeah. 1B? Oh, is that something, the other one?
I move that the city council meeting tonight extend beyond the midnight deadline to conclude the agenda.
Second?
Call for the vote? Thanks.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, their, um, next item on the agenda is item 6, the consent calendar, and there are two resolutions for your consideration this evening. Consent calendar, item 5, Resolution Number 2021-55, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley authorizing examination of sales or transactions and use tax records. And consent item 7, Resolution Number 2021-53, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley authorizing the execution and filing of a claim, state good of repair funds with the Ventura County Transportation Commission for allocation of Transportation Development Act funds for fiscal year 2021-22.
Okay, items to be polled.
Mayor, I'd like to poll items three and four, if possible.
Okay. Three and four. Anybody else? Okay, uh, let's go with items three and four real quick. Well, I won't say real quick. Let's just go with items three and four.
Uh, I'm not sure.
Questions on three?
Yes. Who do I ask these questions to? Can I ask you?
All right, go ahead. I'll, I'll give it a shot.
I'm like, okay.
I got, I got backup.
Okay, I, I just saw that in the budget on page two, it said for electric vehicles and infrastructure, $360,000 for the grant, $90,000 local match. Is that electric buses? Because that would make me really happy. Or is it other electric vehicles?
Similar to the Deleride vehicles that we have.
Uh huh.
Uh, but maybe a little smaller version. Um, so, and that along with the infrastructure.
Would those be used, um, along our bus routes?
Yeah, so the plan, when the, um, Short Range Transit Plan was, um, when the study happened back in 2018 or so, it was adopted, I believe, in 2019. One of the recommendations was that we do a pilot program for the community service route, and that was some of a hybrid of a Deleride um, route that goes into shopping centers along various routes and along the fix route. So that will be the pilot program that we want to implement, and it's, I believe it's a 12-month program. So these funds will help pay for those vehicles there. Um, and then to answer your question about the buses, just you, we are looking into our replacement uh, local bus, probably in about a year and a half, start beginning, looking at that. See what types of vehicles are out there, whether we'd go hydrogen or electric. That's still kind of remains to be seen at this point, but we started out, we have to follow that mandate very soon. So that we're going to have to replace our compressed natural grass vehicles soon.
And my second question is, do those, uh, do those electric vehicles have Wi-Fi?
They do not, but there's capability of doing that. Um, throughout other transit agencies, it's very easy to, um, they have Wi-Fi in their vehicles. We could easily put the routers in those, um, with the cradle points. And some of the technology that we have in there now, it can easily be added. So that's an easy feature to put on.
I just think that's a, that's a, if we had Wi-Fi, I know there's electric buses on the Antelope Valley that have Wi-Fi on them. And that would encourage ridership and encourage our financial recovery of the costs that we have for public transportation. And so, uh, if that would be a consideration in future grants that we write, and thank you for whoever wrote the grant. Um, I really appreciate it, but th, those are just my two questions.
And we can definitely decide, with the vehicles we have now in place, we could add Wi-Fi on there. We just have to get the funds, um, secure, and then, um, go out to bid and, uh, easily install those.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Uh, questions on number four? I'm assuming that's, we'll leave that on for the vote, right?
Yes, yes. Um, my only question is, I believe, of the city manager, were, were these subject to competitive bidding at all? Any of these three contracts?
For the Calnet?
Yeah.
I, I don't believe so because it is a, uh, it's a cooperative purchase through the state of California.
Okay.
They've already done the, the competitive bidding.
Okay, that was my only question.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Tony.
Okay, um...
Remove consent items 1 through 7.
Second?
There we go. Motion is second. Call for the vote?
Mr. Ma, okay. Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, um, would, would like to make a comment about consent calendar. The part about waste management, freezing the, uh, raising fees, uh, that's going to be a big help to our community. And, uh, I think it'll, it was very good of them to do that, and, uh, I personally want to say thank you very much. Uh, it continues to show their willingness to work with this community and be part of the community. So thank you very much to, uh, Waste Management for waiving their fees.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is item 7A, adoption of a resolution revising the terms and conditions of employment for confidential designated employees. The reading of the resolutions is as follows. Resolution Number 2021-50, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley establishing terms and conditions of employment for confidential designated employees and repealing Resolution Number 2020-46 and previous resolutions to the extent that they are in conflict herewith. And city manager Gabler will present this item.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we are returning with this item from the last city council meeting uh, where we first introduced it on December 6th. The, uh, as you may recall, the city council designated a confidential uh, group to do the negotiations for the city council with our employee groups, um, primarily with our management designated group. That has been concluded. So we're bringing back the, um, opportunity to address compensation and terms with that confidential group. Um, the, uh, effective with, uh, should the council adopt it, there would be a cost of living increase um, of 2%. There would be another one-time payment of 2% based upon their annual base pay, uh, base salary. And then on July 1, there is a 1.75 cost of living increase adjustment that is also, uh, it will be implemented. There are a few, uh, there's one... There are a few, uh, there's one change to our annual leave cash out, uh, and there's a reconfiguration to the holiday pay. That concludes staff report. We did not receive any public input, um, since the item was introduced on December 6th, and we will recommend the City Council adopt the resolution.
Thank you, sir. Motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, prior to making a motion, we need to read a, an oral report.
Yeah, go ahead and read that.
Okay. In accordance with Government Code Section 3511.1, a summary of these benefits for the various positions identified below is reported as follows. For the position of City Manager, City Attorney, Deputy City Manager, and Administrative Services Director, revisions to pay ranges and compensation unless specified under individual contracts, annual leave cash out restrictions, and holiday pay are as follows. Effective as soon as adopted and configured, a 2% cost of living adjustment that includes adjustments to pay ranges will be implemented. Effective with the paycheck that, after the tw- 2% cost of living adjustment, each employee will receive a 2% one-time payment equal to their annual base salary. Effective with the first pay period on or after July 1, 2022, a 1.75% cost of living adjustment that includes adjustments to pay ranges will be implemented. Effective for future annual leave cash outs into 2022 and beyond, the cash out will be further restricted to irrevocable elections made the prior December for the only time earned during the cash out year while retaining the maximum number of hours available to cash out at 235 hours. Effective after adoption and as soon as systems are configured, holidays will be paid accord- in according, according to employee schedules instead of a straight eight-hour benefit. If the employee's normal day fall, falls on a city reorganized, recognized holiday, then the holiday will be reserved as an eight-hour benefit for later use. All other prior benefits remain, levels remain the same. Enter report.
Okay.
Move adoption of Resolution Revising the Terms and Conditions of Employments for Confidential Designated Employees.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Let's do it again.
Okay.
Is that entered?
Okay.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, the next item is um, got somebody squirming in their seat. And so therefore, I'm going to interrupt the process and make a special presentation just so he can wait and squirm in his seat. So I think if we, the entire council could uh maybe come down to that table right there, and then if somebody has a camera, they could get a photograph of the group. You can come too, but you're not required to. Okay, all right.
Well, it's in front of the table or behind the table? Yeah, we don't like to take your shoes off. Okay, in the interest of uh, of uh, our continued efforts to maintain our budget, we just have a very simple certificate of recognition to Didi Kavanaugh. With sincere appreciation for five years of dedicated service as an employee of the City of Simi Valley. And Brian went all out, strong down the local group, that's right. Tiffany's, 711. Tiffany's 711. We can add this to your sparkling lights. Oh, there you go. Now I just, I turned it off. Okay. Does it work? Oh, I don't like being in the center. There we go. Gotcha. Thank you all. I like. Okay, that's funny. Thank you. I like.
Okay, now we have some new business to take care of.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next item on the agenda is item 8A, Adoption of a Resolution Appointing David Caseras to the Position of City Attorney and Approving an Employment Agreement that establishes salary and benefits for the position of City Attorney. The reading of the resolution is as follows. Resolution Number 2021-54, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley appointing David Caseras to the position of City Attorney and approving an employment agreement establishing salary and benefits in connection with said appointment. And Jennifer Gutierrez is here for this presentation.
Okay, who is like, oh, I was just reading that, and I'm going, where is she? There she is, Jennifer. I'm so excited for her.
I know you are, that's great. So, good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the City Council. The executive search firm of CPS HR Consulting was retained to assist the city with the recruitment and selection process for the position of City Attorney following the resignation of the prior City Attorney on June 2nd, 2021. While the recruitment process was conducted, Assistant City Attorney David Caseras served as Acting City Attorney. The recruitment process resulted in a total of 22 applications being submitted. Following an interview and initial screening, six candidates were invited for an interview with the City Council, and five candidates participated in the interview. Mr. Caseras was selected as the top candidate and best suited for the position. The City Council authorized Mayor Mashburn to negotiate an employment agreement with Mr. Caseras. The result of these negotiations is the employment agreement, which is currently being brought before the City Council for consideration, reading of, on the record of the required oral report and approval. And I am here for questions.
Yeah, should we do it? Any other questions?
I'll read the oral report. In accordance with Government Code Section 3511.1, a summary of the City Attorney's salary and benefits is reported as follows. The annual salary for the assignment of City Attorney will be $235,000. The City Attorney will also receive a monthly vehicle allowance of $400, and the city shall further reimburse mileage at the IRS standard mileage rate for any miles traveled outside Ventura County for city business purposes, a term life insurance policy of $151,000, and reimbursement for an annual physical of up to $500 per fiscal year. Consistent with other executive management employees of the City of Simi Valley, Confidential Employees Group, Employees Group, the City Attorney is eligible for health benefits, vision, dental, life insurance, and comprehensive medical insurance. Other benefits include dependent life and disability insurance, as well as workers' compensation. Paytime off includes holidays, administrative leave, compensatory time off, and leave accruals as, on the same basis as other confidential executive management employees. Further benefits include tuition reimbursement, classic PERS member retiree benefits, tax-deferred savings plans, and retiree medical insurance. These benefits are set forth in detail in Resolution Number 2021-50 attached to the staff report.
Okay, um, do we hear a motion?
May I make the motion?
The sound, the motions are deafening.
All right, um, I'm very proud to say I moved to adopt a resolution appointing David Caseras as City Attorney effective December 20th, 2021, and approving the employment agreement containing the terms and conditions in connection with said appointment.
Second. And delighted that Sonia and Deanna are here to recognize this event as well.
So we have a motion and a second, and probably a third, fourth, fifth, and we'll call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Yes, yeah, uh, Mr. Caseras would like to say a few words.
Thank, thank you very much. First, I want to please thank Mayor Keith Mashburn, Mayor Potem, Didi Kavanaugh, Councilmember Mike Judge, Councilmember Ruth Webenos, and Councilmember Elaine Lister for this opportunity and the confidence in me to provide the City Council with its legal advice. It is truly a great honor and privilege, and I will do my best to confirm your faith in my appointment. If I may, I also want to thank the following individuals who have played an important roles throughout my career. Stan Yamamoto, the former City Attorney with the City of Riverside, who gave me my first legal job as a Deputy City Attorney. Tracy Noonan, the former City Attorney of Our Fair City, who also hired me as a Deputy City Attorney. And Lonnie Eldredge, our most recent City Attorney, who set numerous examples of fine stewardship. And finally, I want to thank Mr. Robert Aciani. Mr. Aciani served as the Chief Deputy City Attorney for the City of Torrance, and I worked directly under his supervision for more than eight years. As it turns out, a legal education is alone is not enough to help you succeed as an attorney. In my opinion, it's critical to have a mentor, a mentor who can help steer you away from the various professional pitfalls that may come your way. Mr. Aciani was such a mentor. To this day, he's the finest trial attorney I ever had the pleasure to work alongside with, and I'm very proud to now call him my friend. Next, I want to express gratitude towards my extended family here at the City of Simi Valley, specifically Martha Cohen, Lisa Iavello, Mike Peters, Emily Primo, Anne Sorenson, Ron Fujiwaki, who's here, Tamara Cusano, Sean Gibson, Maria Mandala Duncan, Chris Oberander, and Lucy Blanco. All of you have given me specific words of encouragement, encouragement to pursue this assignment. I further want to thank all within the City Manager's office. We have a great working relationship. This in turn helps us to get the job done here at the city and keeps the city moving in the right direction. I look forward to the continuation of this relationship, especially under Mr. Brian Gable's leadership. I also want to express appreciation for all those within my office, because there is definitely no I in the word team. I am lucky to have Sonia Heher, Deanna O'Connell, Natalie Bella Fontaine, and Leana Rose on my team. I cannot ask for a more dedicated group of professionals and colleagues. They're here now, that's an example of their dedication, and I appreciate that very much. And quite frankly, I simply couldn't do my job without them. And of course, I want to thank my parents who are watching from home. Without their love and support and encouragement, there's absolutely no way I would be here today serving as this council City Attorney. Lastly, I want to thank Mary Gagne Caseras for our time together and for also taking care of our two dogs while I was working late during planning commission meetings. With that, I conclude my remarks and say thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, this time, we're going to go on to our reports, and we will start with Councilmember Lou Webenos.
Thank you, Mayor. On Tuesday, December 7th, I attended the Youth Council meeting after returning from the International Conference for Shopping Centers, uh, which I attended in Las Vegas Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, um, and uh was really excited uh to try to bring some businesses and some developers here, um, and uh, you know, trying to bring a Raising Canes here, I'm really excited about that, and a Cinnabon, and Annie's, uh, but also people are very interested in our city and helping us uh make over our retail space so that it's more amenable to the residents here, and especially with the development that we have. I want to make sure that our city is a place where people want to shop, um, and that uh we are moving with the times. And so I was really excited to go to the International Shopping Center Conference, and I already talked to uh Brian about which businesses I talked, I gotta give you a stack of business cards that I collected. But people are very eager to come to the city, so it was really exciting to get to go there and to work on economic development for the city. So that's what I did Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, and then on Tuesday, I literally came straight back from Las Vegas, uh, straight to Costco, got the pizzas, and brought them to Youth Council. Uh, I just wanted to make sure they had a little something, they work so hard. I'm so proud of our Youth Council and everything that they do, and I wanted them to have a little something for, um, you know, for the holidays, little holiday party. So I provided the pizza, I believe Kristin and Anna provided goodie bags for them, and they were, you know, planning their town hall uh for 2022 and all the topics and everything. So pretty amazing, we got an amazing group of kids in Youth Council, I'm very proud of them. On Saturday, December 11th, I attended the Christmas tree lighting ceremony at the Simi Valley Town Center, and it was so exciting to just drive in and see the parking lot full, full of vehicles at our mall, which was wonderful. And then um they did the tree lighting, there was a wonderful band that played, I believe, past 10:00 PM. Uh, there were also, um, there was also a table, for those of you who don't know, we have a uh, a little boy named Aiden who's looking for uh, um, bone marrow and platelets, and if you're under the age of 40 and you can donate, if you can be a match for him, that would be wonderful. Uh, they had a table there too, but it was just wonderful to see our mall so full of people and so many people shopping, that I did some decent shopping there. So it was a wonderful event to have the Christmas tree lighting ceremony. On, um, and then last but not least, on Saturday, December 18th, I attended the wreaths across America with the Daughters of the American Revolution. Um, it was beautiful uh to be there and get to say a few words to the American Legion, and then to talk to several uh families who actually thanked me for being there, for laying wreaths on um the graves of our veterans uh who, who have passed on, and I can't tell you what a difficult time it is for so many of our veterans and families of veterans who have passed on during the holidays, and it really meant a lot to them to see volunteers there. We finished like in less than half an hour. We put all the wreaths on all the different um uh grave, gravestones there, and it was nice for them to see that we cared about them, because it is a difficult time for a lot of our veterans and their families. So it was nice to get to participate in the wreaths across America, and I guess that's something they do every year, and to me, it just reminded me of all the things that I do with them. Uh, Boy Scouts every, every year, Boy Scouts uh and Girl Scouts go and place flags on the different, uh, at the different cemeteries for Memorial Day weekend, so this is a nice new tradition that I think I'll, I'll carry on. Uh, and they did, I, I know they're going to retire their flags, so if there's any Boy Scout troops or Girl Scout troops that want to do a flag retirement for our Simi Valley Public Cemetery, get in touch with Wendy Spiegel, because she's looking for someone to help retire their American flag and raise a new one that they're going to buy for the cemetery. And that's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, December 6th, prior to the City Council meeting, I served on VCTC uh with an ad hoc committee of six members of the board to select finalists for the CEO job. On Tuesday, December 9th, I attended the retirement of Sergeant Keith Eisenhower over at the Simi Valley Emergency Operations Center. Congratulations to him and his service, and it was very appreciated, it was a great showing. On Saturday, December 11th, I attended, I too attended the tree lighting over at the Town Center. Always a big, always a big draw there for that, and I liked the way they did it this year, they moved the tree back so there was more room in the center court. That was very nicely done. Also, I was participating in the big toy drive we had Operation, it was called Operation Holiday Toys, positive, put on by our police explorers. That was also a big success. They took in a whole bunch of toys and cash donations. On Sunday, December 12th, I wanted to say happy birthday to my son Nick, my youngest turned 21. On Wednesday, December 16th, I was very happy to see our, our employees out here at the In-N-Out truck getting their lunch, and you know, it's one of those things where it's kind of said we weren't all in the building together talking and doing other things, but I think you'd like this better, because uh I, I thought that was a great idea, having the In-N-Out truck. On Thursday, December 16th, I spent all day with VCTC again so we could finalize the CEO decision, which turned out to be Martin Erickson. So Martin Erickson is now the new CEO of VCTC. And we also finalized the Fillmore Western Railroad contract, so that's finished now too, and hopefully we have a good provider there. We'll continue doing movie jobs, having the restaurant train, all those things they do during the holidays, get all that squared away and keep that going. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Lipter.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a handful of things to share. On Tuesday, December the 7th, I was uh with the mayor, attended the grand opening ribbon cutting for Catalina Paints, a lovely family-owned new paint store that's there on First Street and um a great addition to our community. On Wednesday, December 8th, attended the Task Force on Business Recovery. Um, we discussed um just some of the different things that uh Simi is doing. We discussed just some of the different things that Simi is doing in Moore Park and others as far as accessing CARES money potentially to benefit our recovering businesses. One of the things that was also discussed was the listing of the county and who is receiving the funds for their fourth round. And that list was actually put out later that day and appreciative of all the Simi Valley businesses that were recipients of funds from Ventura County. On Saturday, December 11th, I apologize that I was not at the Christmas tree lighting. I will say that that afternoon, I conducted the Harp Extravaganza in Glendale, where there were 13 harps playing festive carols together. And then I immediately caught an airplane where I spent a week with my sister and family in Kauai, celebrating Christmas a little early. So I apologize for the other events that were missed. But it was a great time with family. I wanted to say a thank you to Attorney Deanna O'Connell, who I understand is going to be moving on to another employment, but another city. But I know he will be sorely missed by our city and appreciate his efforts. And I want to say that when he was here, I'm sure he scooted off after we acknowledged our current, our new city attorney. And congratulations to officially becoming our city attorney. And wanted to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas this week. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protim, for the last time.
I know. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In keeping with moving, or in keeping with trying to be proactive, myself along with some other business members, met with Assemblymember Jackie Irwin on December 9th. She asked to meet some people in Simi Valley, because it looks like we may be ending up in her district, according to the redistricting. So that was a very nice, very nice meeting. She asked us, what does Simi Valley need? What can I do for Simi Valley? So she's already working for us, even if, even though she's not here. So thank you, Jackie. Appreciate it. On the 11th, it was my youngest birthday, but she's 36, so that makes me a lot older than you. So happy birthday to Anna. I attended the Ventura Wine Walk, and that was my first time there. So I've got some great ideas. So I'm going to be talking to a couple of organizations in town to see if we can come up with something like that. Our city manager came up with a cute tagline that I think I'm going to go with, so more on that later. On the 13th, I had a Zoom call with the Simi Valley Library Strategic Planning Process Consultant. It was very interesting. We use LSS, I believe it is, LSS Library Services. And they had some great ideas of what they're doing in various libraries around the country. Some of them were very, very interesting. But she had a couple of things that I thought we can look into possibly. And I asked, Kelly Beely is our director, and she does a great job. And so I said, Kelly, what's your wish list? So we have a lot of things to look at and to discuss and decide where to move first. So that will be happening in the near future. On the 15th, I met with Suzette Valderas very quickly for a meet and greet. On the 16th, I had the pleasure and sadness of attending the retirement for our deputy chief, Bob Brill. After 25 years with CMEPD and 31 in law enforcement, he decided to retire. He looked way too happy that night, too. Great turnout. There were people from, there were retirees, there were current. There were people that he's worked with previously. There was representation from other departments, multiple other departments. It was a very, very, very good send-off. So congratulations, Bob, on your retirement. And what was funny is the next day, on the 17th, I had the pleasure of getting my COVID booster with Deputy Chief Shorts. Which was kind of nice. I got to spend 15, 20 minutes after the shot talking to Deputy Chief Shorts and learning a little bit of what his thoughts are and giving him some of my comments. And so that was very nice. And along with what Councilmember Lister reminded me, I did want to thank Deanna O'Connell. They snuck out before we had a chance. Congratulate him on his new position and to thank him for all he's done here in Simi Valley. And final, congrats to our new city attorney, David Caceres. Thank you. That's my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Of course, I didn't bring my calendar, so I'm just going to hit the highlights and let everybody guess what date I did these things. So first off, which I thought was high on the list is myself and Councilmember Judge attended the retirement dinner for John High Bush up at the Reagan Library. Very, very nice event. And he was touched. He said good things about Simi Valley, and so did Councilmember Judge and I, just to make sure they knew. And then the other thing that, I went to two luncheons here. One was the In-N-Out, right up front. And then the other was catered sandwiches. I think they were from Corner Bakery. Two different days, and great idea. I mean, if there's one thing that we could do more of anytime, is recognize our employees. And I think that was a great way of doing it. And I actually think they enjoyed it more than going to a restaurant and only being able to sit with you. This way, they got to move around, talk to everybody. If you went and sat down by them, they could get up and walk away really easily, you know. But I think it went over very well, and I hope to see more of those types of thank yous. And so thank you to the city manager for having that done. I too went to the toy collection at the town center. And also was there. I didn't have to be tested or anything, but for Aiden, the young boy that's looking for a transplant, bone marrow transplant. And it was always good to see so many people there willing to be tested and ready to step up to the plate and be tested to see if they can be a donor. The good news is, at the time, they thought they had found a donor, but they continued to ask people to be tested simply because, just because they find a donor, doesn't mean that that donor is going to be a successful one. So I thought that was good, and so many people kept doing the test. At that event, the Christmas tree lighting was good. The Christmas tree was beautiful. And the food there, and I'll ask Councilmember Levenos to help me with the name, Harachi. I know you're going to.
Warache.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I won't even.
There's two Warache. There's a Warache, and then there's a Warache Express. Warache Express is owned by the daughter, and it's in the mall. And she has amazing food. So does her mom, but they're a little different.
Yeah, they are.
Try them both. They're both good.
But they were excellent. It was a great place to happen to be served by their food. And it's the lady at the mall, very good. So anyway, I wanted to throw a shout out for them. Went to the Keith Eisenhower Retirement at the police station. Went to the Catalina Paint Store grand opening. That was very nice. And they too did something I thought was extra special. Instead of hurrying and feeding the dignitaries and the council and all these people, they had all these workers there and set up food for all of their contractors. People come in and buy from them and stuff. It was really nice. I brought, I want to say I brought a company in to Simi Valley, but I don't think I can quite go that far. I've been bugging this guy for a long time that he needed to move here. He has a very, very large drywall business, and he does large, large buildings all over LA area. And he came to me and told me that he had moved here. He had leased a spot, and he's moving his business here from Chatsworth. So. Yeah.
You're hired.
I'm hired. Yeah, that was it. The other thing that was mentioned tonight, I think by Ruth, the bicycle events. This city is so well-known for the bike trails that the park district, I think, does most of the work on and has. But we get so many people from out of town that come to mountain biking events here. And if you pick up most of your trade magazines for mountain biking, you will always see pictures of the trails, and you can see that they're in Simi Valley. So at the tourism meeting, I made a specific point that I thought that was a group we could reach out to and spend some of the money that we have on advertising and reach out to the bicycling group. And because there's no way you could ride every trail in this city without spending the night. You know, it'd be a two-day deal minimum. So I think it's a real good place to place some money. And with that, I just want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. And whatever you celebrate, enjoy, eat, maybe put on a little weight. Thank you. All right. Next item. 9B, which is for requests for future city council agenda items.
I have two requests, Mayor.
Okay. I got to look both ways.
Me, to the right. I'm just going to say on your right next time. It's been a while. I can't remember the last time we had a report on commercial tenancy, vacancy rates, and economic development. I'd really like that to be a quarterly thing, a regular thing. It just seems like it's very sporadic.
Yeah, we've gotten them prepared for January, and then we're going to do it quarterly.
Okay. And then the second request is, I would, I know we, I know we had the pandemic this past year and a half. I know we're still in it. But we should, like most other city councils, be setting annual measurable goals for the city. And I would really like for that to happen in 2022. I would like for us to have a retreat of some kind and for us to set annual goals of what we would like for the city to accomplish in the next year. We've, in the three years I've been here, we've only ever done it once, and that's it. And I think other cities, they meet every year. They have a retreat for city council members and the mayor every year with the city manager. And they look at, what are the goals? What do we want to accomplish in next year? And then, you know, they set those goals. Youth council does it. It's kind of embarrassing that we don't. Youth council does. So I would really like that to be a set thing, that every year, city council sets goals, whether it's three goals or five goals, but something that we can, you know, say, this is what we're going to work on this year as a city council.
I'll second that. Okay.
And I'd like to wish everyone, I know we wished everyone a Merry Christmas, but Happy Kwanzaa for those of you who celebrate that, and Feliz Dia de los Reyes for those of you who celebrate that, and Happy New Year.
Okay. Anybody else? I have something I want to bring up. I don't know how many of you are aware, but we confirmed a, recently, a neighborhood council member. And there's pretty good indication that there's some, what I consider to be behavior not becoming to a neighborhood council member. And I'm prepared to call for the removal of this person. You can't undermine the safety of our citizens and expect nothing to happen. And this is the way I feel. So I wanted to agendize, but at the same time, I want to ask staff or whomever to do a thorough investigation and make sure what appears to be true is true, so we don't have any false accusations or anything like that. And based on, there's not another neighborhood council meeting until after our next meeting. I was, initially, I was going to ask for her at least temporary suspension until this investigation takes place. But based on there's no meetings, I guess there's really not any particular reason to do it. However, however, I am adamant about the need to address this, address it firmly, quickly, and remove anybody, anybody in this city that undermines the safety of our community. In my opinion, should not be welcome as any position within this city.
You're going to need to name that person.
You know what?
You're going to need to give a name.
A name? Okay, it's Rebecca Alvaron. And I would appreciate a second on this, even though it's not required.
Second.
Mayor, I just want to make sure we tread carefully down this road.
I'm sorry?
I want to make sure we avoid liability and that we tread carefully down this road.
Oh, absolutely. So do I. That's why I'm saying, let's do a very fair investigation. In fact, it's not a trial, however due process is appropriate.
Because there are other neighborhood council members that have put their city council members' safety at risk.
Well, I think that's a separate subject. And if we have to address those, then we should do that also. But this is something that just recently happened, allegedly, and certainly looks pretty clear to me. But I call for a thorough investigation.
Well, I took up the issue with the city manager with the safety issue that I had with regard to a neighborhood council member. I just want to make sure that you're aware that saying things from the dais, you know, implicates the city. That's all I'm saying, Mayor.
Yeah. So can we have that investigation by next meeting?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Who's going to conduct this investigation? And I just, this just feels like a very slippery slope we're going down, Mayor.
I think collectively, it'll be the city attorney's office and city manager's office.
We're going to have to discuss that, because that could present a conflict of interest for our office.
We'll figure it out. Yeah.
I'm fine with, if you're worried about conflict, we can go to the sheriff's department even.
We'll get a resolve.
Okay. All right. That's my request. Thank you for the second. And that is it. You know, I don't have, I don't want to miss a, I didn't get any documents. Said we had to close a memory of anybody. Are you aware of any? Okay. So apparently, it's a very fortunate evening in that. And with that closing, I just want to.
Mayor, I have a request, if I may. I had a former student who passed away in a car accident this past week. If we could adjourn in honor of Giovanna Casillas, she was 20 years old. She left behind a two and a four-year-old. It's been a really rough week for me. So if we can adjourn in her honor.
Okay. And then we'll get a certificate.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. To my counterparts, thank you and Merry Christmas. Adjourned.